Go ahead and get going. I was just looking around to see the room where we are. Okay, perfect. All right, start out with the roll call for today's workshop. Victoria?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
Indra?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Kathleen?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
And I believe we have Joel online. Okay, and Seth will be absent today. All right, first on the agenda, we have Main Street Funding, and I will hand it over to Dana for a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. I'm Dana Pierce with the Economic Development Division. And today, we're here to talk about the Main Street Grants Pass funding request. We do have Michael O'Coin, who's the Vice Chair of Main Street Grants Pass here, as well as some board members, and also some other community supporters. So thank you all for being here. Staff has given direction by City Council to recommend potential city funding sources to back a three-year startup strategy launching a downtown Main Street program. That's Main Street Grants Pass. It relates to Council goals of economic growth by encouraging economic vitality, growth, and diversification, and ensuring downtown is a vibrant neighborhood and attractive destination. This project really started as a council goal back in January of 2021, was added to the council strategic plan under Objective: Encourage Economic Opportunities, an Action Item 2.5, which was to support establishment of a downtown merchant association. At that time, we did not have an Economic Development Division, so it wasn't until April of 2022 that action really started to take, to move forward on this project. So at that time, our Economic Development Specialist was hired, and he began attending downtown merchant meetings and establishing a routine visitation schedule with the downtown merchants to really start understanding what the need was and providing support. Also, in support of the established council goals, Visit Grants Pass received a technical assistance grant in December of 2022, and they retained a consultant from Civic Possible to facilitate the development of a downtown roadmap. I did want to mention that Jason Schneider, he's the consultant from Civic Possible that conducted the work. He's available virtually today, so if you have additional questions or would like some additional background, he's available to answer. Thank you for being here, too, Jason. And then in May of 2023, so that's about six months later, there was finally a kickoff meeting to begin that process, so that work with Civic Possible started exploring and launching a most effective way to support downtown businesses and stakeholders to work together and promote the downtown. That took about, I guess, what did that, about six months or so? And then this was the development of the roadmap for Downtown Grants Pass. You can see an image here, and the link below is a link to the full plan. It's a 43-page document. That was a compilation of interviews, listening sessions, and even research of old reports that talked about the need for a downtown association of some kind, and provided some strategy on how we could move forward with this. So in January of 2024, a group of about 70-plus downtown stakeholders met and reviewed that roadmap and committed to furthering the work that was laid out in that design. Following that, in July of 2024, was the first true Main Street Grants Pass Steering Committee convening. They came together, they started strategizing on the formation of an entity. Between August and December of 2024, the Grants Pass, Main Street Grants Pass, applied to the Oregon Main Street Network, they established bylaws, and applied for their nonprofit status. All along the way, City Economic Development staff provided support. In FY25, the city provided $3,000 to assist with legal fees associated with the formation of that nonprofit, so we just show some support there. And then between January and March of 2025, Main Street Grants Pass transitioned from a startup board to a formal Board of Directors. They organized community outreach events and prepared an initial budget proposal to come before Council. In March of 2025, they also applied for the Oregon Main Street Revitalization Grant and were awarded in May $400,000 to support renovations at 221 Southeast Sixth Street. The Council did invite Main Street Grants Pass to multiple workshops. The April 14 workshop was really an introductory presentation on the organization. On May 30th was the first real request that came before Council for funding for Main Street Grants Pass. And then on August 18th, they came back to continue that discussion. At that time, direction from Council was provided to staff to identify city funding For the current City Council strategic goals of economic growth, there are a couple specific outcomes that call out Main Street. Outcome 1.2, Increased Economic Investment and Activity, in Action A, says to support economic development initiatives through key service partners, including Main Street. Outcome 2.1, Increased and Diversified Economic Activity Within Our Downtown Area. That Action C says to work closely with Main Street Grants Pass to create partnerships for a sustainable Main Street program. This slide is a reminder of the request before you. This is a request for a three-year total of $270,000. The investment would be year one, $100,000, year two, $90,000, and year three, $80,000. This slide also shows a pathway to self-sufficiency, so you can see each year a decrease in the need for city funding and increase in self-generated funding. It also notes some of the expected return on investment, including job creation numbers and private investment. Main Street Grants Pass also provided some information on budget allocation. This is an annual average, and it shows about 55% to 60% of funds going to personnel, so that's funding for the executive director and a program coordinator, as well as a breakdown of other estimated percentages for event programming, marketing and promotion, and administrative costs like operations and compliance. Staff does recommend establishing performance metrics to be achieved at the end of year one, so for example, minimum of number of memberships or having the executive director hired before year-two funding would be released. If the Council approves this action, those contingencies can be addressed in a formal funding agreement that's executed between the city and Main Street Grants Pass. Main Street Grants Pass did provide some examples of key performance metrics. Their membership metrics that they listed were year one, 110, year two, 127, and year three, 145. They also noted other potential performance metrics, like event performance, which could look like a percentage of growth in attendance, revenue, participation, or regional draw, and also downtown impact, so percentage of business retention, new business recruitments, and property occupancy. Here we have the potential revenue sources that staff reviewed to bring to you today. The first one listed is LB0000, General Lands and Buildings Projects. It does have an estimated balance of $785,902. We also are looking at the Industrial and Downtown Loan Fund. This fund has a balance below the proposed principal of $500,000, and it does affect grants for small businesses if some of those funds were selected to go to this program. For the FY25 budget, approximately 700, I'm sorry, $471,000 is available in that fund. And then the final fund that we looked at was the City General Fund for Economic Development. $171,703 was budgeted for this year from the General Fund to go to economic development, with some minimal cost savings related to staffing changes we may have some funds available to help cover. So you can see the amounts here that staff is suggesting that we would break down for this request, $40,000 from the LB0000, $40,000 from the Industrial and Downtown Loan Fund, and then $20,000 from General Fund Economic Development. The call to action is today September 15, and is at Council discretion. You can move to action or move to a business meeting or additional workshop. The policy questions we'd like, I'm sorry, answered today would be, you know, does the Council recommend providing the requested year-one funding to Main Street Grants Pass from the proposed revenue sources and amounts listed in the previous slide? Does the Council recommend considering the same funding sources for year-two and year-three funding? And does Council recommend contingencies for year-two and year-three funding? I'm available to answer questions, as well as Michael O'Coin, the Vice Chair for Main Street Grants Pass. And again, Jason Schneider is online as well, if there are other specific questions about the history and downtown roadmap.
Thank you, Dana. Council have questions? Rick?
Thank you, Dana. On Slide 10, General Lands and Buildings Projects. What is the method we use to take $40,000 out of there?
Well, this is essentially a general fund that's used for these projects. It's accumulated, Brad might have a better way to describe it, but it's available funds for lands and buildings projects.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be a transfer. Is that what your question is, Counselor? I mean, if the Council decided, you know, that would be the sidebar, I mean, you'd have to probably do a, you know, a supplemental adjustment.
Okay, so what you're saying, the money's sitting in that account, but we have the ability to transfer it out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Kathleen, and then Rob.
I don't know exactly who to address this question to, possibly the Vice Chair, but when I, what I've heard about other mainstreaks in the nation is that the businesses sort of get on board first and then ask the city to come in to join them. And on the slide, previous slide, it said something like 70-plus stakeholders that came in in the beginning to, or last year even, to look at this model, and I'm wondering where those people are and if they're still involved.
Do you want me to introduce?
Sure.
I was gonna say, um...
Come on up to the mic, please.
Carrie, one of our board members.
And then go ahead and start with stating your name and that you're representing, blah, blah, blah.
I think a lot. Good morning, good afternoon, however you guys gauge your day. I'm Carrie. I just wanted to let you know that in walking around and handing out flyers to try to get people to come today, because our goal today was to fill this house and show you that we are downtown. So a lot of those people are working their small businesses today. 95% of the people said, "We're the show, Carrie. We gotta be here Monday at 11:45 to open our business, but we'll be there with you in spirit." So just to tell you, a lot of them are working their businesses, and I think a lot of people are confused, but as soon as you tell people, "We are the new Main Downtown Main Street Association, we are gonna be one voice for the city," every single person from old business owners to new business owners had a lightbulb go on, and we're like, "Oh, we're the downtown association now. We understand." And the other thing they asked for, and we'll work on this as a board, I just haven't had time to get with everybody, because we're all working too, is we need a Venn diagram to show what associations meet at what time on Wednesday and what association is what, because Main Street is really important. People just need to have the lightbulb connection that it is the downtown association. The name changes, I think, why they're all not here.
Well, I didn't mean so much to be present today, but are they members? Do you have 70 memberships of these stakeholders? Or that's what I meant by where are they? How are they supporting you?
Gotcha. Yeah, I was like, now you have to talk.
Hi, Michael Coin, Vice Chair of Main Street. A lot of them aren't in the downtown district for Main Street. A lot of them were just community stakeholders that had, wanted an opinion of what the roadmap was gonna outline. But yes, no, we don't have the amount of all of memberships right now. As of March, we've only been working as a continuance board. We are still working on establishing subcommittees. We're still working on garnering memberships. Membership drives weren't our first initiative, and our bylaws and setting up a board, setting up our mission statements, trying to garner funding for a full-time staff member to actually go out and raise memberships, and public awareness is our first steps. But we do have active communications with all those people. They're on email list, and they're involved.
Mayor, we do have Jason Schneider online, and he's raising his hand. He does have a comment if...
Okay. Jason, do you want to weigh in? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, if I'm not being very hard to...
Okay, hold on one second, Jason. Kind of talk a little bit. We're just gonna try to get your volume right, so keep talking, but I might have to ask you to repeat it. So just go ahead and start talking.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for your question. I worked on this for about six months, and I'm gonna talk to you a lot of your guys and everybody.
Okay, Jason, I'm gonna ask you to pause one second, because we still can't get the volume all situated here, so give me one second, and then I'll ask you to start speaking Just having a little technical difficulties.
I guess while we're waiting, I could show you something that's in the downtown roadmap that talks about the percentages of city funding versus individual support. If you don't mind, I can pull that up. So this downtown roadmap is very detailed. Again, Jason did a lot of research and interviews with our downtown business owners, property owners, and something that came out of it were various sessions. I'm sorry, I'm just scrolling down till I see it. It is an image, but this kind of shows you what it looks like for Main Street support with other organizations, other Main Street organizations. Can you make it bigger? Can you make it bigger? Yeah, I'm gonna see if, I'm trying to do that now. There we go. Hopefully that helps. Can you see that okay? Just one more, I think. Okay. There. So you can see from the research and our, the specific community sessions to our downtown is the image on the left, so you can see that our downtown said, this is their percentage breakdown of what they would expect, would be, you know, 72%, I'm not sorry, 42%, I'm so sorry, of public support versus 42% of grants and donations and 60% membership. But you can see it's pretty similar to the breakdown that most other Main Streets have. They have 30% to 50% of local municipal support, 30% to 40% of local donations, and then membership at 20% to 30%. So it's not too far off of our expectations, not too far off from what the standard is. Do we have Jason, or we?
Um, we've tried to wait, and I don't know if I can hear him yet, so...
Oh, okay.
Maybe?
Give me a thumbs up when you think you're ready, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, Jason, you want to go ahead and try to speak again, please?
Sure. Is the volume coming through okay?
I think we got it now. We're doing the old school, mic on the speaker. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Totally get it. It's right when technology works right. So I'm glad Dana was able to share kind of what we heard from the community as far as the distribution of revenue for the organization, as well as what's going on on a national level, what's kind of more of the averages. But I do want to address the question...
Yeah, I don't think that's working, Karen, sorry.
Oh, no. I'm not coming through?
Not, not quite yet, but we have IT coming to help.
Okay, Jason, if you just want to pause one second, we'll try to, again, try to fix it on our side. Any further questions from Council at this moment in time? Rob?
Yeah, Dana, on Slide 9, you talk about membership metrics, and I guess these are just kind of random numbers, or maybe they're not, but year one, 110, does that mean 110 members?
Yes.
And then up to 145 members by year three?
Yes. That's, that's the proposal that Main Street Grants Pass has put before us.
So that's, that's what they're suggesting, or they think is reasonable or a good idea, 110 in the first year? Okay.
Any further questions? I got Rick.
Dana, were there any goals for 2025? I realize that was their formation, so maybe that was their main focus, but were there other aspects that were looked at and achieved?
Yeah, I do think when we look at their grant request that they made to the Oregon Main Street Program, that is fulfilling a major goal of supporting downtown revitalization, and it's an excellent award to have right off the bat. They do have other goals for supporting downtown events and bringing a car show or a cruise back downtown to support tourism in downtown. They've also done other activities like downtown cleanup days, where they're out there cleaning up and trying to support the beautification of downtown. They do have some solid goals that align directly with economic development to support our merchants, to support getting more stores and reducing vacancies. We're hoping to be in partnership with that, you know, over time and be able to really hit the ground running and working with the downtown property owners as well on that, so...
Thank you.
Any further questions? Indra, and then Victoria.
Dana, are you in charge of the downtown area and economic growth, or do you have staff under you that is in charge of that? Who, who does that? Who meets with merchants downtown and gets events going and thinks of ideas for events?
Our Economic Development Specialist did fulfill that role of supporting our downtown and helping to organize the city-run downtown events. Some of that we'll continue to do. Right now, I'm fulfilling that role.
So is it possible, I mean, it looks like Main Street maybe would fulfill that role. Would it be possible to not have that position, and then the money could go to Main Street? How does that work? Erin?
That was a, that is a portion of, of the role of that, that position. If we were to fully cut that position out, we'd have to look at the different funding mechanisms for that position, but that would change our delivery of economic development for the whole community. And so our economic specialist had a portion of it as an ambassador for downtown, but also was an economic advocate for all of Grants Pass. So a reduction in that position would be a reduction in some of those services also.
Okay, I think we're gonna give one more attempt to the phone. All right, if you want to go ahead and start speaking again, I think we might have it worked out.
All right. Testing, testing? How's that come through?
Oh, that works so much better.
Oh, great. Okay. Wonderful. I, because I don't have video of everybody, I don't remember which Counselor had made the question specifically around the number of attendees at the event and where membership is at now. And my understanding is that kind of implies, you know, the chicken or the egg, do we get members first, or do we get municipal funding first? And through the conversations that I've had with your community and eight other states, 30 different communities, and working with Main Streets, this is always one of the biggest challenges in, in starting up, and particularly in our interviews with those associated with downtown, there's been a lot of historical confusion because of the different entities that have handled different downtown events. And so businesses were showing hesitancy to get involved in another thing. And so in talking to some of the core folks that were part of the conversation, we believe that the city being able to put up funds in good faith at the beginning would give the organization the breathing space, it'd be able to accomplish the good work it needs to do to in order to attract the members that it will need, because if it focuses on membership primarily, whatever staff or board is on, online, will focus most of their time on membership and not enough on time on programming, showing why membership should be something that, that people sign up for. So it is kind of a chicken and an egg thing, and the strategy, I believe in their ask, was really to make sure that they had that breathing space to prove the value to the members after they've seen, you know, 10-plus years of kind of back and forth on who manages downtown promotions, events, and development. I just wanted to be able to answer that. I think that was, that was the main point.
All right. Did you have anything else to add before we go back on to the questions?
I don't.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much for your participation. Next, we had Victoria, and then it looks like Rob. So Victoria?
So I'm wondering about on the policy question, does Council recommend considering the same funding source for year two and year three? My, if memory serves me right, I don't think they asked for the same amount the second year or the third year. So when you say the same funding, you mean from the same sources, but at the, at the lower rate? I don't remember off the top of my head what those asks were, but it would just be from the same sources, but at the lower amount. Is that right?
Yes, that is the question, yes.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? I got Rob.
So Erin, at the last meeting, I thought I was pretty clear when I, I said that I thought that where, where the funding probably should come from this would be from the $634,000 Downtown Services budget. I mean, it may be, it may be overly simplistic, but it would seem as though the words downtown services really kind of meshes with what this group is trying to do. So that's why I suggested that that's where the money should come from. And I thought I actually asked for where in the downtown services budget could funding come from this, not where can we, you know, you know, cannibalize other unrelated funds, but where in the downtown services $634,000 could we find to support this group? But I don't see anything today. I thought it was very clear.
That must not have been, we must have missed that then. If that's the case, and you wanted to consider only downtown services, that would be a different discussion, I think, from what we're having today, as the downtown services funds are all expended in essence, and we look at levels of service changes or modifications to support the downtown. And if that was the intent of Council, we apologize for not hitting that mark unless Brad can highlight a little bit more about the downtown services budget.
I know that JC, he's not here today, obviously, but did look at that. If you wouldn't mind, I'm gonna just take a quick look and see what that email was. We can give you a better answer here in a few minutes.
Thank you, Brad. Any further questions? We're not moving off on this topic. We're gonna give Brad a second. No more further questions? All right. Anything else to add, Dana?
I think this has been a long-term goal, and we've been working for multiple years trying to support that development. A lot of our community has come out to show their support, so I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dana. Now we have more questions? There were discussion? Question? Okay, Indra.
So I'm wondering, since it was put together last year in 2024, and I guess my question is, is Main Street waiting for the city to provide funding to really do anything? Because I haven't really seen anything that's been done thus far, so is, I mean, is Main Street doing something dependent on this funding, and why in a year haven't we seen something already been done, especially maybe this summer?
I'll take that one. Well, the discussion started...
Well, the discussion started in 2024. The roadmap was established in January of last year. We started steering committees middle of last year and didn't actually form a board until the beginning of this year and applied for a nonprofit. In the meantime, we've been establishing bylaws, doing the groundwork to establish a nonprofit. We applied for the grant. That took a lot of energy from us. But we really haven't had much time to do much, to be honest with you. You know, and obviously, we are a working board and a working board. We all have jobs and normal activities. We're just trying to establish the framework to the organization. And hopefully, with your guys' help, we'll be able to establish an executive director that will really start to put together the footwork on membership drives, events. We have our first subcommittee meetings, trying to establish those. Those are our next goal. Those happen on September 30th at the Hive, where we'll try to put together the subcommittees for our four pillars and then try to generate forward momentum. So a lot of this time has been just over the last few months, trying to present to you guys and just establish our foundation.
You have another question, Indra?
I do, and for Dana, this would be, so is the economic or the downtown services budget, the money that we spend for tourism, like that goes to visit Grants Pass? And I assume we have that bucket. I'm not that knowledgeable on it. But do we have, we don't have any monies left in there that goes to tourism or promotion that we could use for this?
So we did review that. We looked at lodging tax dollars as an option and internally, I think as well as externally determined that that was not a good funding source for this program. Those lodging tax dollars are specific to promotion. And though they may be doing some promotional activities, this initial request is really to get them established and is for operational costs, which is not something that would be eligible under the lodging tax funds. The Downtown Services budget does receive some lodging tax dollars, but I think the majority is general fund for that program.
Yeah, that's correct. As Counselor Pell pointed out, the Downtown Services budget for FY '26 is about $644,000. About $146,000 is lodging tax. So there's this, as Dana mentioned, the significant amount is coming from general fund for the Downtown Services. As you pointed out, Counsel, the DMO, Main Street, receives virtually all of their funding through the lodging tax transfer from the city of Grants Pass to the DMO. So that is kind of a variable amount. The contract that the city has with them sets that at, I believe it's around 28% of what we bring in in a fiscal year in the lodging tax money goes to them. And then the remainder is, you know, split between police and parks and downtown and some other smaller events.
Further questions?
Clint, I got a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Eric or Joel?
Oh, Joel. You have a question, Joel? Sorry.
Let Eric go first if he's got a question.
Okay, Eric and then Rick.
Dana, Slide 8 there. I wanted to ask if somebody can answer this in terms of how we came up, how Main Street came up with the percentages and what the rationale was behind it? Which came first, chicken or the egg? I don't know. As far as the, did they come up with those percentages? Or is that something that came up as a result of after starting the program? So does that make sense, what I'm asking?
I think it's, yeah, probably better answered by Michael, but.
I just want to know the rationale behind the percentages there for each of those separate categories.
I think as far as budget goes, yeah, I think there is a little bit of a framework there within the roadmap even. I think based on our budget and what we plan to drive with memberships and through event sponsorships, that's kind of what our performa is to spend. I mean, there's no, it's not a franchise. I mean, you know, this is what we tend to allocate and what we've seen through our research on what the best allocation of those funds will be. Did that answer your question?
I believe so. I just, if you can explain what each one of them, the reasoning behind the percentages that were, how they fall out. Is there a reason behind it or is that just the way it falls out?
That's just the way it falls out. I mean, we expect an executive director is probably going to be somewhere between, depending on what their workload's going to be, anywhere from $60,000 to $85,000 a year. Programming, other stuff, that's kind of where we envision where our marketing dollars should be spent or our dollars should be spent.
Hey, Michael, I had a question to kind of piggyback on that. So realistically, when you're looking at personnel and the request for an executive director to be funded, that in my layman's term basically takes this organization from a volunteer to actually an establishment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We had Rick with questions?
Yes, you indicated the first year, you'd like 110 memberships. What would be a typical membership fee that would also address some of the funding?
Right now, our base membership is $120 a year and up to $600 a year, depending on the level. We've had conversations with different merchants. We've hosted a couple merchant meetings throughout the year, donated by gates, furnitures, the hall, the Hive, to kind of interact with merchants and get a basis of what, you know, what their needs are. And we're always, that's always a moving target as far as what our memberships are going to be. And we are currently working to probably change that potentially to make it more accommodating for members.
Okay, thank you.
Joel, you're online. Did you actually have discussion or a question?
Question?
All right, go ahead, Joel. Your question is up.
Okay, thank you. Jason, and I'm not sure who your partner is there, but I just had a question for you. It seems like this last year has been kind of rough. And I don't know the exact facts, but there have been committees supposedly associated with your organization. And now they're no longer meeting and there's some dis, some lack of support among the local merchants. I'm just trying to be frank with you here. And we've been getting some of that feedback from these efforts this last year. Are you aware of that? And if you are, what steps are you taking to correct, if any, what your organization plans on doing in this next year?
I believe that question was aimed at me. And we have not been involved in Grants Pass for almost a year now. This was the last program that we've worked with the community on as a whole. So I'm not sure what groups you're referring to. Can you clarify?
You know, I wasn't involved, so I'm not going to clarify. But, so you're not even aware of that going on?
We have not been involved with anything in the community since the roadmap was delivered quite a while ago.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Michael, did you want to weigh in on that?
I'm not sure where that, no.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure where the questioning was going.
Joel, did you have any further questions?
Yes, but I don't think they can be answered. Anyway, no, I'm okay. We're ready to move ahead and see what we want to do.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Any further questions? Rob and then Indra?
I have a question for Jason. So typically, maybe you would know this right off the top of your head or maybe you could look it up really quickly. When you have a Main Street organization in a similar-sized city, you could pick one, but how many full dues-paying members does an organization like that typically have?
Well, it's kind of like that if you meet one Main Street, you've only met one Main Street. They're all incredibly different. A town of 40,000 people, it depends. Because some Main Streets are just municipally funded, some are membership funded. Those that are membership funded in a community your size, 150 to 250, depending on the popularity, how it's structured, how easy it is to enter in, is pretty normal. Main Streets across the U.S. and Main Street America are really kind of aiming at memberships will never be the way to fund it fully, but it is a way to make sure that you have engagement and buy-in. So this is an ongoing conversation nationally about how much they should be involved. I want to just give one example. In Michigan, where I've done quite a bit of work, they're purely municipal funded and there's almost no memberships for any of the organizations. So it really can kind of go in a number of directions. Sorry, I know that's not a clean, easy answer, but I think somewhere between 100 and 200 for your size community would be the right number as it's matured.
So just off the top of my head, say Oregon City or was it McMinnville? Other places that have Main Street, do you know what the number of memberships are in those two cities?
I don't. I can find out pretty quickly for you and I can get you that by email.
Any further questions? I had Indra and then Rick.
Yes, I just want to be clear because you're talking here about it being fully funded by membership by year three. That's what I'm hearing. So I just want to clarify that that is correct.
That's our goal. Yeah, I mean, we look at bringing in events and sponsorships and other memberships, other grant opportunities, working with organizations like So Ready and a couple other organizations to help raise external funds. And yeah, that's our goal, is to be self-sufficient by year three. And if anything were to continue with the city, it'd be as just purely support and partnership, so.
Okay, and then to be clear again, what I'm hearing is that you've been working on getting members, but members are not, you're not getting a big membership because the city isn't supporting Main Street yet? That are, I guess my question is, are businesses telling you that they're waiting to become members until you get funded by the city? Why aren't they becoming members?
Well, that's a question you'll need to ask them. I mean, spend some time downtown. Merchants, yes, there's been historically in our town, you know, they're striving. They're all at work right now trying to work and survive. We've tried to make it as less impactful as possible. I mean, even at what current rates we have, we can't be self-sufficient off of members. So yeah, they want to be supportive, but they also want to know that their city's supporting them also.
Thank you.
So I got a piggyback question on that in regards to, realistically, it kind of goes back to my previous question statement. Is currently you guys are operating on a volunteer basis?
Hundred percent.
So if this was transitioned with seed money to get into an actual functioning organization, you feel? Or do you, how do you feel about that membership increasing and with the product that you could provide?
Oh, I have no doubt. Yeah, we can, we could at least, I mean, I feel like in year one, I believe there's 240 businesses registered within our district. I see no problems at least reaching 50%, you know, after, end of 2026.
All right, thank you, Michael. I was just, Jason, do you have a statement or want to weigh in?
Yeah, I just wanted to offer another response on the membership versus city funding. Really, city funding or public funding is needed as that seed fund. Because when we spoke with a lot of your downtown businesses, they said, we would love an organization. We are hesitant until we see it do something because the last attempts have not been successful. And those attempts have not been successful because they were caught in the membership trap of continually trying to get funding without having that breathing space. So it really is the seed funding.
All right, thank you for the comment, Jason. Back to questions, Rick?
Do you have a list of goals for 2026 and what you would like to achieve? All right, some of them in stated would be.
Yeah, we do have a list of goals. You know, goal one for going from 2025 to 2026 would be to, you know, obviously first hire an executive director. So we have somebody that can represent the Main Street organization, be face-to-face, door-knock, talk with the merchants, show support, show that communication between the city and Main Street and the merchants. Continue to maintain a sustainable board and build a committee structure. So we have our four pillars, subcommittees, which are designed, economic development, business organization. Build those out. Those will help us move forward as far as building out events, building what our goals are. Launch a membership drive would be one of our goals, to also bring membership. Continue to help strengthen current events. Obviously, we've kind of inherited First Friday. We've had great resolve from that. First Friday has definitely increased in its traffic from what we're hearing from the merchants. Continue to build that with the build-out of the Owl Parking Lot. Hopefully, we can increase traffic through there. Develop some baseline downtown matrix, you know, we kind of want to go into the, what our vacancy is, what our foot traffic is, what the mix of businesses are and try to fill out some of the vacancies. As we all know, we have a lot of them downtown. Let's see, I got my goals. Build out partnerships, which we're already doing with the Chamber, Visit Grants Pass, So Ready. Obviously, trying to establish, we have a great working relationship with city staff and obviously property owners. We have a number of property owners currently on our board. We'd like to roll out a few beautification projects. We're trying to roll one out now with a T-Mobile grant to help clean up awnings downtown. And obviously, continue to apply for state funding for grants. The revitalization grant will come up again in 2027. Hopefully, we'll have a little bit better time to prepare for that one and get some more applicants. And then just continue to establish constant communication and marketing efforts.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, seeing none, I will thank you very much. Thank you, Michael. Do you have a question or a state comment? Question?
No.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you, Michael. We'll basically bring it back to.
Would it be possible to get Terry from the Chamber up here real quick to say a few words? You guys okay with that? Are you guys okay with that? Okay, sounds good. Come on up, Terry. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for the opportunity because I know this is not a regular meeting and so public comment. So hopefully, I can help answer some of the questions. I'm not up here giving public comment, but maybe help answer some of the questions. If I can start with the chicken or the egg conversation, you know, which one comes first, membership or city funding? I want to share a story and it's somewhat dated. But the Chamber of Commerce currently operates in a building that was, that's on property owned by the city. And when the chamber started, the city allowed the chamber to build that. They invested in the chamber. The city built the building and we still operate it 50 years, however many years later it is. Today, because of the city's investment, we've been able to host, when we talk about community building, concerts in the park, tap walk, wine stroll, our annual awards banquet, downtown city window decorating, our greeters networking, ribbon cuttings, business after-hours, peer perspectives, young professionals network, our candidate forums that you all participated in, Lemonade Day, Rogue Leadership Training Course that's coming up, and business surveys. We serve on countless committees. And I know, you know, this is like, gosh, it seems like there's a lot of layers. There's a lot of people working in this field. Are y'all stepping on each other's toes or is it redundancy? But it takes a lot to get this work done. Economic development is a big picture, I think, as it relates to the questions of why are people not signing on as members? And that membership tiered list, and I hope that you all remember when we did the city tours and talked about some of the things going on and we were able to walk around with you and show you the potential. But a lot of those membership goals are, you know, before we fulfill that promise, and I say we as a board member liaison with the Chamber, requires somebody in that position to get it done. You know, and so if we are able to continue to grow First Fridays, we've done the downtown cleanups, we did the downtown walking tours, we've hosted merchant meetings. The Chamber is willing to pass over the Coco Crawl. And it's much for community involvement to make that a fundraiser. So when we talk about sustainability, yes, it's a chicken or egg when it comes to city funding versus membership. But if it's that same investment the council makes, you know, I've listened to you all since. since Lisa Newerone's campaign and candidate forums, and I very much appreciate how fiscally conservative you are. I very much appreciate how much you take, you know, a close look before you just say yes to spending. But I also hear you say that we've got trouble coming out of Salem and a lot of my work has been redirected that way. And so I haven't been able to focus on downtown as much. But while we watch how conservative we are with our spending and hear that Salem continues to make the state of Oregon have a name for the worst place in the U.S. to do business, I ask you to step up as leaders and make Grants Pass in Southern Oregon the best place in that state and lead by example with an investment through this. So thank you for allowing me to get up here and share some of the work through the Chamber. It's now 100 years old and what I hope Main Street could help me accomplish.
Thank you, Terry. Before we go to, if, did that spark any questions, I guess? Kathleen, a question?
So Terry, thank you for that breakdown. And so what you're basically saying is that you need Main Street's help to achieve the goals that the Chamber wants covered?
Well, it's not what the Chamber wants covered and I appreciate that question, Counselor Crone, because I'm going to be completely candid with you. When the call from the downpound merchants came out in support of this, we did some self-reflection. It's, you know, and when you hear what are Main Street's goals and what do they do, a lot of them sound like the Chamber. And we had some very, very serious reflection of are we not meeting the goals of our member, of our community, of our council? And I took it to my board. I've been on this board, you know, I beat the streets and talked to the downtown merchants. And that is a fantastic question because I operate with 3.5 FTE. You know, we contract with you to run the visitor's center, so thank you for that. But right now, today, we do not receive any government funding. The city is a member. You guys participate in sponsorship of some of our events and we contract with you to run the visitor's center. But to answer your question, the needs, you know, it's like saying, we've got county government, why would we need city government? It's inside the county, right? You know, the needs and the layers differ. When you talk about Main Street Grants Pass compared to me trying to serve the entirety of Josephine County, we're talking a lot more brick and mortars. We're talking about greater need for foot traffic. You know, I might be serving people in the trades at home tech and the business needs of downtown get pretty specific. And I think having a partner like Main Street that can be a voice specific to that group of people, to the brick and mortars, really focusing on getting businesses downtown. For example, I had an inquiry this week of somebody who is looking to move into the area and rent space. I sent it to all of my partners out there from, you know, Cave Junction, Merlin, Applegate Valley, anything within this, within the county limits. And I think that these folks have the opportunity to grow that from our heart, from our downtown out and and offer a little different perspective.
Any further questions? Do you have a question? Okay. Thank you very much, Terry.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll bring it back to council for further discussion and/or action. Victoria?
So I think that the the business owners and the very big round of applause there makes this, what I'm about to do, very easy. So I would like to move to action and to recommend providing requested year one funding to Main Street from the proposed revenue sources and amounts listed on the previous slide. And for years two and three, I recommend to continue that funding too, but to be able to have some flexibility, so perhaps in year two and three, it could be moved to the downtown services budget like Rob was suggesting. And so I so move.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to proceed forward with year one funding and prospectively with year two and three with the options of how it's funded. Is that kind of a synopsis?
Yes.
Okay. I would be looking for a second. Is there a motion on the table? Seconded by Eric.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Further question or further discussion? Rob?
Yeah, I'm really torn on this because on the one hand, I know that we need a downtown organization, it's done well in the past. And, you know, this, what I'm going to say now is going to make me sound like a curmudgeon or people, you know, won't want to support me the next time I run for office, if that were ever happened, et cetera, et cetera. However, I'm just going to tell you, as a downtown merchant, I'm blown away with how poor the communication has been from this organization so far. The January 2024 meeting, I signed up for, you know, email notifications and contact, et cetera, et cetera. I haven't had a single communication from this group ever. Now, what's amazing to me is as a downtown merchant for many decades and as a city counselor, you would think that I would probably be pretty high on that list of people they would want to make sure they kept involved. Zero. And then to follow up on that, the one of the last meetings, I mentioned a woman who has probably the most iconic, most photographed building in in Grants Pass, who was miffed that she was never told about the the possibility of the the grant, the large grant, right? Never told. Okay, I mentioned this at the last meeting. After, and I mentioned a couple of other merchants that came to me that were also very unimpressed with the follow-through that this group has provided so far. Not a single person from Main Street, not one board member approached me after that meeting in person, by telephone, text, email. Nobody wanted to know, you know, who these people were, how they could make it right, where they could do it better, not one single communication. So I mentioned, like I say, not any to me personally, not any to me as a business owner, not any to me as a counselor. I even mentioned, you know, people that were dissatisfied with what was going on. No board member reached out to me and said, who are these people? Where did we drop the ball? How could we do it better? So I've seen really, really, really poor follow-through, really poor. So and other merchants have too. There's a few here today that are applauding. I guarantee you, there's a lot out there that have seen very poor follow-through and that's what they've told me. So, you know, that's why I'm torn on this. It's really, it's something that needs to be done, but, you know, I just have to wonder. The board that, I don't know the board members, but it's clearly not a boots-on-the-ground working board from what I've seen just by, just by the examples I just gave, where there hasn't even been keyboard follow-through, let alone feet-on-the-ground follow-through. So not a working board so far. To me, you know, and years ago, now we're never going to go back to that, when there was 170 members of the TCA back in the day, we're never going to go back to those days. But before those people got government money, they worked their butts off and they were the same people that were in my shop, you know, letting me know what was going on, et cetera, et cetera, cornering me, making sure that they got a chance to talk to me. Even when I was really busy, they would follow up and follow up and follow up again to make sure that they got their message out. That's what I saw in the past, that we don't have that now, clearly. Now, what could change, I suppose, if if, you know, maybe there's members on the board, as I suggested last time, as Rob cue public, that we saw $400,000 grant come in from Main Street to Grants Pass. To me, it would have made a lot of sense for some of that money instead of going to a one person, would have gone to the group in general. Now, that's not obviously the way it worked. I also believe that that person could have made that, could have still been up 300,000 bucks and 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 helped support Main Street. But again, I'm not making any of this up. This is all 100% factual, what I just said. And if I don't say it, then I'm not being a good representative of the people. Again, I'm having trouble supporting this because on the one hand, it has the potential to actually do some good things, but so far, we know there's a lot of duplication. And what, where I really appreciate what Terry said about, you know, self-reflection and looking at maybe what they could have done better and maybe that's why a group is coming up to do part of it. The fact that, I don't know, it just doesn't seem to me that people are really listening to or the board members are really listening to what some of the things they easily could have begun to rectify already, X number of months or in some cases, X number of years in. I just don't see it, you know, I just don't see it coming from you guys. So on the one hand, I'd like, and then as far as, you know, this motion of looking at two and three years, you know, supporting this two and three years ahead, I mean, that's just, for me, such a, such a bizarre, bizarre thought train at this point, without even seeing what this group could do in the first month or six months or a year with with the funding that they're asking for. I could never even imagine going out and committing to year two or year three.
Michael, hold one second. Since we are in discussion mode at this moment in time, I'll have to ask Rob if he wants you to respond.
If that's what Michael wants to do, sure.
Thank you. Go ahead, Michael.
Well, first of all, thank you for saying it wasn't personal. It sure sounded like it. The grant that Scott Hillier received is a reimbursement grant, he doesn't have $400,000 to give us and that's not how grants work. The grants are worked, done for the work that he's doing on his building. So communication, as far as that goes, everybody that signed up at the roadmap is getting an email. They have gotten emails. If your email's not on there, I apologize and I'll look into that, but either your email's not on there or it's gone into your spam, so. But we are trying our best and we're trying to make a town better. We've just now getting established and we're doing what we can to make this work. And we've tried to communicate, we, the communication's a two-way street. We've invited you on downtown tours with us. You declined or did not want to show up, so I can't help that. We've tried to communicate with you in other ways and obviously, we're not getting through in one way or another. I apologize for that if that's on our end. But we are communicating with our merchants. Granted, it's probably not every day. Granted, some of those emails probably go into a spam filter and we can't control that, but we are trying to communicate as best we can.
As a volunteer group?
As a volunteer group.
Okay, so I got Seth, I believe is in the waiting room, wants to weigh in on discussion. Can you hear me, Seth?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right. Floor is yours, Seth, for a discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for for letting me speak. You know, I know I stepped down from the diocese on the last meeting, you know, on purpose, obviously. I have obviously no financial gain for Main Street and what I've actually been spending almost the last two years of my life on come January. And so to get to this point, it's taken a lot of work. And, you know, I'm disheartened to hear some of the comments by some people up on the council diocese and from the community, from the downtown area. You know, I spend a lot of time downtown. And just from being on council, I've learned that there's a lot of loud voices, but there's a lot more voices that maybe just don't want to speak up or they don't have the time or, yeah, just they just don't want to. And so there, there's a lot of support for this downtown. And yeah, we've, we've made mistakes along the way. We've had some poor communication in certain instances, 100%. I mean, that's the nature of starting an organization like this. And, you know, I come from the private sector and so starting something like this was something I'd never done. You know, we got an email on Saturday night from someone who was originally on the Main Street board with me, one of the three people that started the board and started the organization. And unfortunately, they resigned and and that's okay. That's, that was their prerogative and what they wanted to do. However, some of those statements were untrue. And I think it's unfortunate because Main Street is in that person's district and could really help that person as we're going to help all the businesses downtown. And again, you know, I've lived in Grants Pass my entire life and I just really care about the town. So I just really hope that council can see this differently and help support us at least for the next three years. That's all I have.
Thank you, Seth. Any further discussion?
I got a comment.
All right, Joel. Joel, it's your turn.
Oh, it's my turn?
Yes, Joel, it's your turn.
So I think all the comments today are heartfelt and any personal attacks or saying that people can't read it because it's in their spam are kind of, I don't think they're appropriate because everybody's just trying to get at the truth and and trying to help each other and to help our downtown. So we don't need to get defensive. We need to be proactive. We need to get a downtown organization that functions. It seems like this last year, it's been a real big struggle and I don't know if it's a lack of experience or a lack of time or whatever, but it seems like it's, from the people that talk to me, alienated more people than helped them. And as we move forward with the, with the money and the funding, to fund, to fund somebody to do this, you know, I would hope that that type of performance would would improve drastically regardless of spam folders, regardless of personalities, regardless of whatever, because we're all on the same team here. And so I'm a little bit disappointed in the, in the mode of conversation and some of the, the tones. And and if we do move forward with this, I would expect that to change. And I would also expect the, like the board member who resigned, that, yes, that was too bad, but maybe there was a legitimate reason for it, maybe not, but to at least go and talk to them and and visit them at their shop and and see what they're thinking and what we could have done differently, rather than just say, you know, I sent a message to you and this is your spam folder. So I, I don't want to speak too long on that, but I do want to be heard.
Thank you, Joel. Further discussion, I have Kathleen and then Indra and then Rick. Kathleen?
Yeah, it seems to me that in this age of technology, we've lost a lot of the personal contact and that we, we rely too much on technology to get our message and our points across. And I think what I loved about Grants Pass when I first came here was that it kind of was more personal, that people did talk to each other nicely and they communicated differently than parts of the country that I've come from. And I really enjoyed that. And so it would be a tragedy for us to lose that in our community. And it's, I'm seeing that on different levels of our community. And I would hope that the business community would stay more in the realm of talking to each other personally, visiting each other as we've heard today. And yeah, maybe what I would be more inclined to do is give less money right out of the gate, maybe half, and see how that worked. And yeah, that's what I'm thinking right now.
Any further discussion? I got Indra and then Rick and then Victoria. Indra?
Yes, I just first also want to say nothing we do is personal. We all care about our community and we're just trying to make the best decisions that we can that affect the most people. We represent our entire city and so we have to look at that. I think my objection, you know, I am a little disappointed, I would say, that that not more has been done already, but I understand that a lot of people in the audience on the board have probably been working very hard, but we haven't seen or felt the results out here, I guess I would say. So just maybe take that into consideration. My main objection is the funding. The city just doesn't have the money. And so we're looking at taking money from these pots that go to other really important things in our city. So we have to weigh, in fact, the, the second pot affects small businesses in a negative way throughout our city. So I struggle with that. I understand downtown economic growth is really important, but so is growth throughout our city. So is our industrial area. So is our public safety, which comes out of our general fund. Okay, so we have to look at all that. I would, you know, we never save money. Maybe in the next budget, we could budget money for this in a proper way that everyone looks at, but I just don't see taking money from one pot that helps benefit to put it into another. And that's kind of where I'm at right now.
I have another comment. Go ahead when you get a chance.
Okay, Joel, let me put you on this real quick. Further comments, further discussion, I have Rick, Victoria, and then Joel. Rick?
Thank you. I think Main Street is a really good cause. I think I would like to see it go forward. I'm. I would like to see a written set of goals for 2026. And maybe one of the alternatives, as we go forward today, would be consider another workshop. And in that workshop, I guess in those goals, I would like to see some sort of framework or charter, how you would emphasize different activities. For instance, contacting different businesses, keeping them informed and so forth. I don't think that's a difficult task, but I'd just like to see it in writing as a focus. So again, if something doesn't always get written down, then it doesn't happen. I find that I make a list for myself all the time. So I also like Kathleen's idea of possibly looking at 50% funding for the first year to try and kickstart it and go forward. But maybe consideration for additional workshop on this. Thank you.
Further discussion, I got Joel, and then Eric. Joel, go ahead.
Okay, so if I understand the motion, it was for the three years worth of funding. I can't support that right now, given what the past performance have. And yes, mistakes have been made, but I don't see any attempt to correct those. So I would say if the organization can get back on track, or maybe they already are on track. But from what I hear, it's not that way. That it would only be for one year. It could be for a reduced amount. And that there would be performance criteria that we would consider for second-year funding. And not to be punitive, because we want this to succeed. We don't want it to fail. So we need to provide the leadership, as was stated very eloquently, to succeed. Unfortunately, the past year has not given evidence of the organizational capacity, not just funding of an executive director to do that. So I would hope that if we do this, that that changes.
All right, thank you, Joel. Just to clarify, because Joel's bringing up questions. To clarify the motion that's on the table, as I understand it, and you can correct me. The motion was to go forward with first-year funding for Main Street and continue consideration for second and third year with the option to solidify different funding sources. I kind of did a summary. Is that... I mean, sorry, Victoria, since you made the motion, is that clear?
Yes, I'd say that, yes.
Okay, Joel, is that clear to you?
So if I can state it in my own terms, and so what I heard was the motion is for the first-year funding. No guarantee of second or third-year funding. We would look at funding sources and performance criteria as we go ahead into year two.
That's adding a little bit of lipstick on it. But the second and third-year funding within this motion was to consider the option of second and third-year funding with different funding sources? Yeah. Is that clear, Joel?
I would support... Yeah, I would only support it with the additional performance criteria that would hopefully ensure that it's going to be successful.
And that could be part of your guys' determination, as I believe the motion is just to keep the option for funding second and third year open. Further discussion, I have Eric, and then Victoria.
Yeah, this is a tough decision to make, because it's... And I like the motions that were brought. But I think, like what Kathleen, Rick, and also Joel were talking about, those are important points. I like what Terry had to say in terms of being able to help the economy downtown. All of that is very important. So I would be in favor of moving forward with this motion. But just like what Joel was talking about, monitoring, see the success of what the performance is like. It's taxpayer money and we obviously don't have very much of it in this time of the... I mean, it's the Grants Pass taxpayers' money. And we need to make sure that we are good stewards of that. Now, granted, it is going towards the business to stimulate the economy. So, I mean, these are careful things that we have to weigh out. And so I'd be in favor of bringing this to a workshop, getting the goals out there, making sure that we fully understand what it is that we're doing here. Because this is not to be taken lightly. So that's what I would be in favor of.
Thank you, Eric. Further discussion, I have Victoria, and then Indra, and then Rob. Victoria?
Yes, thank you. So what I think is that no one's coming to save our town. We're going to save our town. And I see a lot of nodding heads out there from business owners. And so it's something that is necessary for us to go forward with. I wouldn't be in favor of going to another workshop, because this is the next workshop. So I think that it's something that we need to... We need to take a chance on this. It's literally a campaign promise I made to you, that I would work to get businesses, to work on businesses in the area. The only way that we would be able to... All of the things that the city needs to do in the years to come, which are weighty and many, is to increase our tax base. And so that is why it was one of our campaign promises. Because we knew that that's what we needed to do with all the, with everything that is coming to our city from the state and inflation and on and on and on. So I believe, I hear Council Kronen saying maybe half-funding. However, I think this organization needs the full funding because they need the person to do the job to make this grow. And in the last workshops that we have discussed this, I mean, this is a successful organization nationwide. So we are not taking just a chance. To me and my way of thinking, I think that they have proven what they have been doing and what they'll be able to do, just like, you know, it'll just take off like a rocket ship with a little bit of seed money from the, from us, from the city, from the people who are sitting in the audience. It is actually their money, too. They'd like to see it be put towards growing our city's economic base. Downtown is our flagship and that is what brings people to Grants Pass. And it buoys up all the other industry and businesses that are around Grants Pass when people come to see our beautiful downtown. So I don't think that we're taking a risk. I think that we are investing in people who are investing in our city. I think we need to do it. There's no reason not to go forward today, in my way of thinking. I would, I don't want to... Honestly, I don't want to cause a friction on the diocese with this. But I did see personal biases a little bit. And I know that Seth, he voluntarily stepped down. He wasn't voting on this because he was once on the board of Main Street. He isn't now, but he stepped down anyway. If other business owners feel like they have such a bias against this, I might suggest that they voluntarily step down from voting on this as well. There's probably not enough to do that, but I'm just suggesting it. I just felt compelled to suggest that. And so I still, my motion is to move forward. And I hope that other people would take a chance on this, too, because our city needs it. We need this action. And it would be to fund from the funding source that was given to us today in year one. And then in year two, to, you know, the funding source would not need to be from these funding sources. So thank you for letting me answer a few of the things that were brought up. And I'm a strong yes on this.
Further discussion, I got Indra, and then Rob?
Yes, I just want to point out that we are spending taxpayer dollars that we don't have. And as I want, of course, as much economic growth and downtown growth as anyone here. We have an economic development department that's short one person. Maybe I would suggest that when we hire that person, they spend more time doing downtown things. I would be good with that. But we've been working several months without that person. I just feel like we are taking taxpayer dollars. We pay city staff to do those things. I know they're very busy. I'm not saying you have tons of time, but maybe a little more effort to downtown. I think I'm just not happy with taking the money from these pots to put into this right now. And I do believe it is a risk. If I could have seen more productivity so far, to say yes, I would probably do that, but I just haven't seen it. So to me, it is a risk with money that we don't have, that we're now going to take from very important pools of money that we don't even have, that the taxpayers are sending to us. Thank you.
Further discussion, I got Rob?
So Aaron, do we currently have someone in economic development or a position in economic development that's unfunded? Is there a vacancy now that's been unfunded for some months, or no?
Yeah, we're in the process of getting ready to recruit for that position. There was an individual that was with us, that was an economic specialist that worked in conjunction with Dana, that Dana was the manager of that division. And so they, part of their role was downtown liaison work. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that person was actually the only person ever that actually contacted me with regards to this. The actual city employee was the only person who ever actually contacted me about this. But so basically, at the end of the year, we essentially have a surplus because of that, what this position is now unfunded in economic development for the duration of the time that that... Until that position gets filled again, essentially, we have a surplus at the end of the year because we're not paying that check out every week, right?
We do, we do have, we will have some surplus due to the vacancy. That position has multiple funding sources. So there is some available that would be there from the vacancy.
So even though that wasn't on the brief list that staff provided for potential funding sources, that could be on that list, right?
It actually was under the 20% economic development.
I'm sorry.
We didn't call that out, Council, you're correct. But that would be one of the sources of revenue that we staff identified for that.
Okay. So and why was it, why'd you pick 20% on that?
20% from economic development was chosen just as, for operating the division, what we felt was, you know, something that we could come up with for year one, if you chose to go that route.
But I guess my question is, so if we have an employee that is, let's just say, their gross compensation, all in, is, we'll pick a figure of $100,000 a year, which is probably pretty conservative. If that position is vacant for half a year, why wouldn't we just use $50,000 from that position? Why wasn't that included in the possible funding sources? Why only 20%?
Well, for year one, ask is $100,000, so $20,000. But the vacant position would not be all-in at $100,000. It would be below that. But we are also kind of split between fiscal years and, you know...
Well, all-in for almost any city employee, when you all-in, right, is $100,000 and up, or basically. And that position is not an entry-level position. So I'm not really sure what figures you're referring to.
It's close to entry level, yeah.
And by the time you figure, you know, benefits and so forth and medical, it's a considerable amount, right?
It's not $100,000, but yes, it's a considerable amount. But I agree with you that, yes, there is revenue there that is recovered because of the vacancy.
Okay. Anyway, that was just kind of a side point. But anyway, to me, the motion as it stands right now that mentions in any way, shape, or form funding for year two or three, I'd have to be a hard no on. And I would be a hard no at a business meeting, anything that talks about year two or three without any proof whatsoever that the year one money was used constructively in a way that council had hoped. I'm not even sure that, when you have a motion that has hard funding for one year that talk about consideration for other years, is even an appropriate motion. I don't actually believe it is. But I'd be a hard no on anything that talks about two or three before we've seen anything about how year one is executed.
Further discussion, I got Indra, Eric, and then Victoria. Indra?
Yes, I'm a no for the motion as it stands. But I would definitely be willing to reconsider something that included maybe more funds from the economic development department if we didn't fund that position to give it out to an organization who could promote downtown. Yes.
Further discussion, I have Eric, and then Victoria. Eric?
Trying to think about how I'm going to phrase this general statement. Basically, I understand everybody's concerns up here and in the audience as well. My take would be, let's see how they do the first year. The second year, let's either grant or deny those funds based on performance. I mean, maybe they can put their money where their mouth is, in terms of that. This is taxpayer money and it's going towards fixing the economy. Let's see how they do the first year. Maybe it's not, maybe it shouldn't be the full amount based on our budgeting for the first year. But let's give them the funds that they need to be able to proceed forward and then let's see how they do. That's kind of what my brainstorming is right now. That's how I'm feeling.
Thank you, Eric. Further discussion, I got Victoria, and then Rob. Victoria?
So if I'm correct in this, it seems like maybe two counselors would be willing to move forward this with the, with an amendment that guarantees funding for year one. And year two and three funding is contingent upon performance metrics. And I would be willing to amend my motion to include that if we have buy-in from the diocese for that with such an amendment.
Okay, so we got, Victoria is offering a friendly amendment to her original motion to add performance metrics into second and third-year funding? That's just kind of a generalized term. Are you shaking your head towards me?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. And then I got a second from Kathleen. So the motion has been amended with a second. Continued discussion, I have Rob?
Yeah, again, the structure of that motion is just, I think, inappropriate. I don't know that you can just say year two and three is dependent on performance metrics without laying out what the performance metrics are today. And I'm not prepared to, I don't know that anybody's prepared to actually do that. But if it's year one funding, it should be year one funding and which should be discussed in the future. But because, again, we have no agreement on what the performance metrics would be or who would compile that data. So inappropriate motion, in my opinion. But getting back to potential funding, again, Brad, why was only 20% or $20,000 if you've got, we're going to have more. If we have a position that's been open for more than, let's just say, a half a year by the time it's probably filled. Why did you choose only $20,000? It would seem as though, and I say this jokingly, but it would seem as though, you know, you'd rather have... but it would seem as though, you know, you'd rather have the money in your pocket, in your department, rather than for this particular endeavor because we're going to have more than $20,000 from that vacancy. And, you know, I don't see why it shouldn't be used for that, you know?
Yeah, Counsel, I think the main reason is because the revenue sources that pay for the salary for that person come from multiple sources of revenue. So it's not all just coming, you know, from the general fund. So that's, I think, probably the foundational reason. We're happy to go back and examine it.
Well, what you offered us today comes from multiple sources, and you even said earlier that they'd have to be transferred from multiple sources. The same would apply to what I'm suggesting now, and I don't understand your reluctance.
Well, the TLT money, we did not include in our recommendation to you today. And there's a significant amount of TLT money in that salary.
Yeah, a significant portion of his salary and cost for that FTE comes from transient lodging tax, and it was determined that transient lodging tax is not an appropriate use for the Main Street program, meaning the guidelines of Oregon revised statute. So then we had to take a look at what portion of that position was general fund support. And there was about $20,000 or so dollars that was general fund support for that position so that those dollars were offered up as we're discussing today. As you were suggesting, those were offered up, the general fund portion of his position.
If you actually want to review TLT restrictions, we'll say there are many of the events that we're talking about that are proven to draw out of town overnight stays or along the road, for that matter, back to the '50s, and others were proven to have been a valid use of TLT money. So again, I don't really, I don't really, I'm not seeing eye to eye with your explanation because TLT money could be used for a number of uses that the Main Street program would actually be focusing on. We know that, you know, we do know that. So again, I would think that if you actually wanted that to happen, it could happen because there is justification for it to happen for the reasons I just said.
Yeah, of the three events that we have, we have Fourth of July, we have the Grand Illumination Christmas Street lighting, and then we have Art Along the Road. Art Along the Road is the one that does have some nexus to TLT. The other two events are, don't have any nexus. And then the back of the '50s, at one time, we did support, that was a long time ago, with Experience Grants Pass and John Bowen. That no longer is in the city's wheelhouse of events. That could be seen as a TLT sourced type of revenue from an expense perspective, but that's not anything that either Main Street or the city currently have any operations for.
It is something that Main Street says they're going to be working on. And so if that actually came to pass, it was a reality that they're actually working on in the coming year, there should be no trouble using TLT support for that, for that exact reason, because it does produce overnight stays. There's no doubt here that these mental gymnastics can be easily hurdled if that side of the room wanted to do it.
My understanding is though, with what Main Street has brought forward, is that is a goal that they would like to consider, but currently, right now, there isn't something like that in existence or they don't have a definite plan or ownership of bringing back the parade and the downtown events for Back to the '50s, but that is a potential goal. So we really couldn't provide that or offer that up for Council to take a portion of, and it wouldn't be able to be a large portion. That would be a percentage of what Main Street has provided based on what percentage of work they do on the Back to the '50s program, whatever that program may be. But that's not something that's in the proposal in front of us today, so we didn't feel as appropriate to bring TLT dollars into the discussion.
So you just mentioned that at least one of the three events does produce overnight stays. So why wasn't the TLT dollars considered for that particular one, one-third of it?
Well, currently, right now, the Art Along the Road is the one you're probably talking about that may have some TLT recognition. Currently, right now, that, and that is not proposed, that Main Street be taking that over at this time either. This city is still operating that. If at some point in time, once Main Street is up and running, I think the discussion, if they were to come forward and want any of those three events, I would imagine Council would be more than happy to discuss that. It's something that we tried to do about three years ago. Tried to see what community might want to take on those events. And the community didn't step up for the three that we mentioned, and so we've taken those on. So we currently have funding for Art Along the Road established as funding and expense and revenue for the city still to operate because there is no plan for anybody to be taking it over this year. And next year, we'll see what happens through the budget process or through maybe the development of Main Street if they're interested in that.
Okay, I guess I'm a little confused because virtually everything that we're talking about, Main Street claims that they're willing to or want to take over or want to be a major part in. And then you're going to say, well, they're not a part of it. But they say that they want to be a part of, whether it's Art Along the Road, whether it's Back to the '50s, whether it's Cruise, et cetera. So, you know, to me, if they are actually working on those things or commit to working on those things, it would seem as though that the TLT dollars would be very appropriate. So we hear both things. They're not doing it, and yet we hear that they're willing to do it or they want to do it. Oh, they're not doing it? They want to do it. I mean, to me, this is gymnastics that doesn't have to be done. The money is there, and we could actually use some TLT dollars here from that exact position. And I believe that because you're a smart guy, you could justify it if you wanted to.
Well, I think if we had a contract in hand and agreement for services, I think that that definitely could be justified, and then we could propose the TLT dollars. And that could be something like Counselor Marshall was saying in year two or three, if they're expanding services or doing something, that those could be funding sources that could be discussed as Council could consider in year two or three. But at this time, we have not been into any negotiations about taking over the services to a degree where we'd be coming to Council to see if they'd be interested in entertaining some kind of agreement for those events to be taken over.
And to clarify, these events that we're talking about are budgeted within our current budget, correct?
Yeah, those three events are, yes.
So the city has full responsibility over those events that are in discussion. This Main Street proposal is alluding to the fact that they could take these over in the near future, but that these events are not within their proposal at this moment in time. So your discussion is very valid, but to argue the fact that why we're not doing this right this moment in time has been answered in duplicate by two staff members here because these events that are in question are currently on the city's budget for '25.
Okay, so to be really specific then, the $20,000 that Brad suggested is based on that position being open for how long? And how long has it already been open?
Dana can help out here.
Yeah, we were estimating just a three-month window. We haven't started the recruitment yet, and it typically takes about that long to recruit. And honestly, the expense of that person has just recently dropped off, so that's what we have available.
So no exact, no exact figure, just the estimate?
About three months.
Okay. And so the $20,000 is based on the current, however long it's been vacant, plus however long it might potentially take to fill, right?
It's a, the $20,000 that was shown on the slide earlier is a portion of that is made up by this position, but there are cost recovery from a couple of other areas too.
Thank you.
Further discussion, I got Kathleen and then Victoria. Kathleen?
Well, I just want to say that I do think that Main Street would fill a vital economic development purpose in our community. And I think the way that Counselor Marshall has reframed her motion, that I would be more in favor of that now.
Okay, further discussion, I got Victoria. But before that, I just really need to clarify this motion one more time because we do have councilors that are basically, I don't believe are understanding this motion. The motion on the dais is to, for the city to fund the first year of Main Street Grants Pass, leaving open or having the option to fund second and third year, not guaranteeing funds for second and third year, but leaving open the options to fund second and third year with looking for different revenue sources, as well as you friendly amended it to add some matrix. Yes, those metrics of success or determination have not been discussed and on this dais today, but would you like to add your emotion to discuss them in the near future or put a date certain to discuss them? Because I think that's what we're being asked for, to have clarification.
I think I would be fine with that, and I would also like to add some of those metrics have been emailed to all of mayor and council. The year one goals and the year two goals for Main Street have been given to, not every, I'm not saying everybody's seen it, but they have been given to us. So some of those metrics that they have given for themselves and their goals could be used to write those metrics, to see if they got the funding in year two and three. So I'll wait on the next one.
Further discussion, do we need any further clarification on the motion? Rob?
Yeah, the metrics that were suggested by city staff, at least I'm aware of, I don't know if everyone on the council, the dais is aware of them. We have no idea if those seem appropriate to the Main Street group. We have no idea if they would agree to them. I have no idea if they are appropriate. They were suggestions made by city staff. But, you know, to me, to include those in the motion is just kind of meaningless at this point.
Any further discussion, Victoria?
Yes, I would be remiss, I think, if I didn't bring this information to the dais that Counselor Benham wanted to. I would like to make it clear that Rob was contacted by Main Street, and this was before Counselor Benham was on council, and asking him to meet with him. And it goes through, the email goes through several metrics of what he would like to meet with him about, but it's definitely about Main Street.
I'm going to have to interrupt you, Victoria. I kind of want to get past that subject. It's kind of been deliberate around. We do have a topic on the hand. It's in regards to funding Main Street. You do have a motion. Do we need further clarification on this motion?
Oh, I did have one other thing that I would like to add to that, though, that I feel like if all councilors who are present here today are going to vote on the motion, that Counselor Benham, who is online, should also vote. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, this discussion has gone long and is in depth. If you guys feel we should go to a vote here, I do believe Seth is online and, nope, he's done? Okay. All right, never mind on that. Then if there's no further discussion, we'll go into a roll call vote. Just to clarify, the motion on the table is to proceed forward with funding the first year for Main Street Grants Pass. With this, with funding for the second and third year, the option will stay on the table for the city of Grants Pass. There will be some metrics of success that could be discussed at a later date in regards to that funding, and also council is leaving open options for that second and third year funding. There was a second to that, and that was amended halfway through. And we're going to go into a roll call vote. Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Indra?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
And Victoria?
Yes.
And then I have Joel online. Are you still there, Joel?
I am.
What is your vote, sir? Yes or no?
Oui, oui, monsieur.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion has passed, and thank you very much. Does staff have full direction?
Yes, thank you.
And with the request that, from Erin, that we put this on the back of the agenda to discuss metrics at a first-future-future state.
Certainly, we have council direction. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much for that long and spirited debate. Next on the agenda is infill housing development incentive program. And it looks like we got Amber stepping up to the podium, and so I will release the reins to you.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping that it's going to be.
Good thing I got more than one.
So far, they haven't done.
Enjoy the rest of your afternoon, everybody.
Absolutely terrible, you know? It's, and anyone who otherwise is just, you know, I mean, have you seen me?
All right, next up, I'll be taking the reins for mayor for just a moment. Next up, we have infill housing development incentive program, and with Amber giving us a presentation. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you very much. We just spoke about businesses, so let's house the workforce. I'm going to propose to you an infill development program. The subject is to create an infill development program that incentivizes the development of naturally occurring affordable housing on lots that do not need new city infrastructure brought to the property. The relationship to council goals is under the housing and infrastructure. The city of Grants Pass demonstrates leadership through increased incentives for quality, affordable, and supportive housing options where there is existing infrastructure. A little bit of background, on June 21st of 2024, the Housing Advisory Committee reviewed an infill development program as a potential housing development incentive for the city. In July of 2024, the HAC then further refined and approved the infill program with feedback from local building, from the local building community, and recommended it be presented to the Urban Area Planning Commission for further feedback. Then in July of 2025, staff did go ahead and present the infill development program to the Urban Area Planning Commission for feedback and received a positive response. So goals of this program, to stimulate development of other housing units. This is plex, townhome, cottage cluster, typically our middle housing types. I'll further explain that in another slide, what middle housing is, which tend to be more affordable to the workforce without requiring a program restriction that we see with affordable housing programs. This also can increase homeownership options, rejuvenate the downtown and adjacent neighborhoods, aging household stock in a way that's sensitive to displacement. This also utilizes lots that do not need new infrastructure and thus don't add any or much extra maintenance cost to the city on that infrastructure. It adds additional residential units to our tax roll, and it invests in our local builders, designers, and subcontractors. So part of the infill development program, the qualifying parameters, these would need to be lots within a quarter mile of Sixth and Seventh Street between the river and I-5, so focusing in on kind of that downtown area. Vacant or underdeveloped property, so this is defined as property assessed improvement value of under $100,000. All city utilities, the water sewer, are within 50 feet of the parcel. The parcel is at or under half an acre. The resulting housing units would be middle housing, new housing, middle housing, or five-plus multi-unit. These are going to have to be small because again, this is only on half an acre or smaller, or mixed-use projects, so having businesses below and housing up top. All projects must be at least 60% of the maximum density or above. This is not difficult to reach on small lots with something as simple as a duplex or adding an ADU. Local builder developer projects would get awarded bonus points in scoring of the RFP. Again, we want to really support our local building community. Projects are required to deed restrict against use for short-term rentals. Our goal is for housing for these new units not necessarily to be short-term rentals, so we want to ensure that that is going to go towards that goal. And then projects must provide their marketing strategy and selection criteria just to ensure that they're following all state and federal fair housing laws. So defining middle housing, accessory dwelling units, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes. So these are single-family attached homes. These can be row homes. Cottage cluster development, so those all fit in that middle housing development type. And then there's a couple examples of how some middle housing can fit into a typical neighborhood character and not stand out at you as much. So going back to that density requirement, I've. So, going back to that density requirement, I've listed on the right hand side what those minimum dense, qualifying densities would be for each zone. Again, pretty much all of these are pretty easy to reach with a simple duplex or adding an ADU to that lot. Some of them even reach at single family, but single family on its own wouldn't qualify for this program, but attached, single family townhomes do, so just keep that in mind. So this map was made a bit further back, so there's a couple lots on here that I will point out, wouldn't currently qualify for that program, that's these bigger lots, they're obviously not small, not half an acre or smaller. But the majority of lots, this is primarily here to show you that there are lots within this defined area that would qualify, just by looking at our GIS program. These lots all highlighted as under that 100,000 assessed value within that quadrant. So this wouldn't necessarily be a map that we would put out with the program saying it has to be one of these lots. But this is just to define that, yes, we absolutely have plenty of lots within this defined area that can and do qualify. So what are the program incentives? We looked at a couple levels, so level one matching grant, providing 50% of matching grants up to 25,000 per project for pre-development. Level two would be the matching grant, same as level one, except offering up to 75,000 per project for a five plus unit multifamily development. Again, smaller multifamily because we're looking at half an acre or smaller. Or the mixed use development, which is the businesses below and the housing above. Examples of qualifying matching grant services include site plans, architectural studies, engineering studies, project financial analysis, development feasibility studies, environmental assessments, building inspections. So the process would be, the staff would create the RFP to be published. Applications would be scored on a set rubric listed within the RFP, they will be assessed by a subcommittee consisting of two to three staff and one to two UAPC members. Within that timeline, we had, would open the RFP for 30 days, we would then give two weeks for the committee to review and then city council approval. I put one to two weeks because it really depends on when that city council meeting lands in relation to when that review ended. Cost implications, so the funding for this program I'm proposing would be sourced from the LB 6388, that is the sale of surplus land fund. The current balance of that is just about $555,000 currently, that funds the Affordable Housing System Development Charge Grant. But with this program, I would be proposing that we pause or halt that grant, since we have the Affordable Housing Construction Excise Tax Program that has kind of come in as a renewable resource to take over for that program. So that can move into that as a more stable source of income, whereas the sale of surplus land, it fluctuates depending on whether we have sold surplus land, it is more finite. And this program tends to be a program that cities run when the sale of new, single family homes are struggling. So this helps to support our local development community while they're struggling to sell single family homes. So next steps, call it action, would be to direct staff to proceed with an RFP, some alternatives would be move the topic to another workshop for additional research, send back to UAPC for further analysis, or to decline to proceed with the creation of the infill development program.
Thank you very much, questions from council, Kathleen?
So Amber, could you please describe to me what is the excise tax program? How is that different from the development charge grant in, in regards to taxpayers' money?
So the construction excise tax is a tax on new development. There's a chunk that comes from residential new development and a chunk that comes from commercial new development. All in all, it comes in to fund affordable homeownership and affordable rentals. I believe, is it half a percent per residential, there is a cap as well, it can't go above 20,000, 30,000? Per, per, or, per project?
Oh, I'd have to look that up.
I know there's a cap, you're not gonna spend $100,000 on this, so that's how that comes in. This was put into place, I believe, in 2022 and since then, we have awarded two awards. One of them went to the Allenwood Affordable Home Ownership Townhomes and the other one went to the Nebraska Trail Affordable Rental.
So I just wanted to follow up on that, what's the difference between, because I saw in the earlier slide that it was not going to be for rentals necessarily.
Oh, so this prog, this program would absolutely be for rentals or homeownership, it wouldn't be for short term rentals, so Airbnb is verbose.
Oh, 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 okay, so this is to provide more rentals?
Correct, or homeownership.
Any further questions, Indra?
What's the definition of affordable in this case, it, it's, they're just lower than market value homes or are they subsidized in any way for renters?
So the beauty of this program is that we're leaning on the type to be naturally occurring affordable, we're not defining affordable here. But we do know that middle housing types for homeownership and for rental tend to cost less for the general public to either rent or own. And so, we're not telling people you have to make 120% or less to qualify, none of that. We're just asking that the type of building being built is a type that tends to be more affordable to attain.
Clint, I had a question.
Okay, just one second, Joel, go ahead, Indra.
Oh, so basically market value, so there's nothing to say that the builder can't, or whoever owns it can't rent it for whatever they want to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Joel, go ahead.
Well, April, I want to commend you for coming forth with a good proposal. The question I had, and, you know, I already know the answer to it, but I just wanna ask the question anyway. The LB fund from it could also be used to help fund our grant that we have out there for housing the unhoused, is that correct?
Currently, no, currently that fund is set aside by council for housing affordable, currently it's set as affordable housing. So this action would be changing to allow for this on a broader scale, of course, technically, council can change it to whatever they want, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, Council King, Council King, you're, the, the second part of that answer is that those funds are, could be labeled as general fund unrestricted funds. So if council wanted to make a modification to the resolution that adopted that system development charge surplus of, of lands fund, you could and then you could dedicate those funds to wherever you'd like as they, they're classified as general fund dollars.
And I just wanna add, council can absolutely say we only want to spend a certain amount of this fund on this program. And we can put an end on this program and say we'll run it for a year and maybe revisit it, these are all options council has.
Well, again, I applaud you for bringing it forth, I just, as we, you know, it seems like with my four years on the council, every topic is about spending money. And, and we've already committed to spending money for the, for the unhoused grant and this could help fund that. And now we're coming up with another proposal for it, so that, that, some of that money would have to come from somewhere else and I just want everybody to be aware of that.
Thank you, Joel, any further questions, Kathleen?
So I'm wondering, so many of these parcels that are vacant along Sixth Street are private property.
All of them, pretty much all of them, yes.
So how do we, I mean, like, some of them we thought would be built on way sooner than they have been and so how do you, I know the incentives are possibly good enough to bring these landowners in, but what if they're not, how, how do we get people to?
So really, we, we put the RFP out, I can do an educational for landowners and developers on how to utilize our GIS to see if a lot qualifies. Answer any questions on what those next steps can be. A little bit of that would be likely the development and building community going out and seeking these properties and contacting those home, uh, landowners and saying, hey, I would like to purchase your lot or I would like to develop your lot for you, so it does put a little bit of legwork on them. But yeah, we, ultimately it's private property largely, so there's not much we can do to force anyone, and we don't want to force anyone, we want this to be a carrot, not a stick.
I'm just thinking of when the Flamingo Hotel was torn down, it was like, yay, we have a spot to build in and nothing's happening.
So just to clarify that, the purple on that infill lot map, those are all vacant lots, distressed properties, distressed buildings, do they have, do they have buildings on them?
Some of them are vacant, but most of them.
Because you kinda led everybody to believe those are vacant lots.
So it's, they're assessed at under $100,000 in a tax assessment value, so a lot of them are gonna have existing property on them.
So that's just, a lower valued home that's actually just, but, and that could be residents living in there, that could be rentals, that could be anything, so.
Absolutely. So this, this area.
I apologize, because you kinda led everybody to believe that those are all vacant lots, which they're not.
I apologize, that wasn't my intention, yeah, most of these lots are likely going to have.
Because I think if a builder looked at that and those are all vacant lots, you would, they'd be buying those up immediately.
So the beauty of this program is you can take one of these lots that has an existing home and you can still qualify for the program, leave that existing home alone and add an ADU. So that still qualifies, you can add a second unit, now that becomes a duplex, whether it's attached or not, that still qualifies. So these units, we still want to make sure homeowners know that they qualify, even if these homes, the properties have homes on them. And some of these homes, a lot of this downtown area, these are 100 year old homes, some of them are getting ready to be redeveloped. So that's also something that we, we're very conscious of, is some of them are at the age and at the degradation stage that they need to come down at their next transfer of hands. And so that will help in that section as well.
Okay, I got a question unless somebody else has a question, let me ask it first and I'll go to Rob. So my question is, is realistically, this is kind of basically promoting the development within the middle housing code that came down from the state. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but if I read the middle housing code in regards to parking, is it basically gets right away from all parking criteria in, in development underneath this middle housing code? So this would be an incentive program to actually continue to increase the density a quarter mile off of Sixth and Seventh Street. So has anybody yet done an analysis or even, because middle housing basically revolves around walkable transit style metropolitan cities. I guess the question is, is has anybody done the studies about our transit system and the availability to it? Because I don't think it actually supports this model.
So not in particular to this project, but a good amount of this land that's not in the general commercial is actually zoned in either R3 or R4, which is a much higher density than what's already currently built out, and when we set those zones, we would have done those studies, does that sound correct?
Okay, but now, I mean, I guess my point is, is now that this is all following, falling, falling underneath the middle housing code, which basically gets away from requiring developers or somebody to develop that property and provide parking, so that actually pushes, you know, when you increase the density, you increase the bodies, you increase the cars and then there's no place for them to park. I mean, it is actually trying to force a model of livability, walkability through transit system, but I don't believe we have the transit system to support that at this moment in time.
So I can't speak for the entire development community, but what I can say that might reassure you a little bit is we recently met with some financiers specifically to ask them how they're funding development of middle housing. And currently what they, by and large portrayed to us was that they're not giving favorable loans, they're giving basically, uh, commercial loans to middle housing the more it feels like middle housing, the more it feels like single family housing, the more they're willing to give typical construction loans. And the biggest piece they cited for that was parking, the more the developer has a unit, an ADU that has a parking spot, if these row homes each have a driveway, maybe a garage, they're much more open to funding the development of that program as a single family home as opposed to a commercial property, which means that developer is able to build with less of a down payment and much more favorable interest rates.
Brad, go ahead, Brad.
If I could, Mayor, just to add, the, the requirement for no parking isn't attached to middle housing, I just wanted to be clear about that, that would, that would actually affect all of these regardless of whether it's middle housing or not.
It's more, more distinct to the actual density zoning is what you're saying?
No, I'm saying because, because this is already within a half mile of a transit line, then the city doesn't require parking. The state has said we can.
So is I wrong in saying that the middle housing actually has like less or no parking requirements for developers?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't say completely wrong, but yeah, it is correct that.
No, no, you can correct me, I mean, because if I'm, if I'm spouting off that I don't, you know, I just need to be educated if I am wrong, okay.
No, that, that requirement is related to a different ORS than middle housing. Middle housing by itself, that, that legislation didn't talk about off-street parking, per se, that was, that was different legislation. So that would be required whether they came in with a single family house or not.
Well, that relieves a little my concern because of my biggest issue is, one of the things since I grew up here, everybody's been complaining about is parking. And if we increase density without increasing parking, you know, we're basically kind of painting ourselves in a corner at that point, I guess that was a point I was trying to get across, but.
Sure.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification, thank you, any further questions? Rob and then Indra?
Yeah, just one comment there, Clint, also in the, the builders that I've spoken with say that, you know, they, they don't wanna build things with minimal or no parking because they don't believe they'll, they'll sell, you know?
Correct, yes.
So it's a fool's errand for them and it's not, there's no prohibition involved for, I mean, parking, as Brad just said, parking's not prohibited. And the builders don't wanna build it that way because they can't, they can't rent it and they can't sell it, you know?
Yeah, that was a discussion we actually had in the, in the Development Code Task Force, it was, all the builders that were on, on the sta, on the committee there, that was one thing that they actually said too, it's not a marketable asset.
So, a question I have, so on slide nine, level one matching funds, I, I don't understand, can you define the term pre-development?
So pre-development is, it's not gonna be hard construction costs. It's all of these assessments, analyses, studies, your engineering, site plans, all that stuff that happens before you start development. I'm looking at Brad to make sure I give an accurate description of that.
That's correct.
Can I elaborate on that?
Yeah, I'd like somebody to elaborate, so usually it's ma, so when you talk about matching and, well, go ahead, Clint.
So, majority of all construction is funded with a construction loan. The premise of a construction loan is you have to, that developer, landowner, that loan recipient has to come up with all the quote-quote soft costs before a draw is actually taken from that loan, so basically that means everything that you have to do to get an actual building permit has to be done out of pocket beforehand, so that's basically with pre-engineering slash soft costs upfront. So your loan, you can actually get a loan, but your first draw from that loan doesn't start until you actually get your permit, if that explains a little better.
So, thank you, so with a lot of our, a lot of our matching grants and things like that, they're reimbursement grants, right, often. So if you're involved in pre-development issues, you know, we don't know if that, do we know for sure that that project's ever gonna come to fruition? Are they ever gonna finish it? So when we have a, when we, when we reimburse people for STC waivers and things of that nature, they've already done the work, we already know that the project's working. We already know that it's presumably occupied and ready to do business or, or be, be occupied. But with the pre-development, we, we don't really know what we've got, right, I mean, couldn't someone bow out pre-development and then we're just out the money?
So we can include a clawback clause if the project doesn't come to fruition. Part of the reason we leaned on pre-development is because these are the barriers that were kind of brought forward by the development community on getting them to that starting point of that construction loan, as Mayor Scherf kind of began to elaborate on. So, we did feel pretty strongly that being able to give them that money at the time in which they needed it to get them to that line and to alleviate some of that barrier was important. So I would recommend leaning more on a clawback clause as opposed to waiting till it was completed to do a reimbursement.
Yeah, I get, maybe that sounds good, I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm definitely concerned that basically we're, we would be providing upfront, for lack of a better term, gambling money, speculation money, seeing how, how it's gonna come along, we the city, and then we may end up with nothing for it. So that to me, as it's written, is very concerning, you know, whether there's a. You know, whether there's a clawback clause, as you call it, if someone agrees to that, or if someone, or if that's actually can be, and we can be reimbursed in that way, but, but again, for somebody to, in a certain sense, kind of put their toe in the water, but not necessarily complete the project, that doesn't seem to me to be a prudent use of our money.
Part of what we can do to alleviate some of those concerns is make sure that the RFP is robust in the requirements and the scoring. So proven ability to bring a project to completion, those sorts of things can be written in. Proven or a pro forma, basically explaining how they're going to fund the rest of the program once it's finished, or the project once it's finished.
So what, what percentage of a, a project might be pre-development, pre-development money? Funding would be needed to get a project off the ground.
That's a good question. I mean, I, I think the size of the project does matter, particularly if you have slopes or wetlands or some other significant, you know, environmental constraint, because then you have a lot more engineering up front. I don't believe that we're going to face that here. We certainly aren't facing slopes in terms of, you know, needing to build retaining walls in this particular corridor of town. But I guess to get to your point, you know, I've seen them anywhere from, you know, 15 to 25 percent.
Okay, so, so if someone wants to get involved with a project, let's say it was more complicated, one of your saying in these locations, it's not likely to be, from what we know right now. You know, again, someone tests the waters, they, they hire engineers and so forth. You know, basically just testing the viability of the project, again, getting back to, you know, in a situation where we had different groundwater issues or other things. I mean, you would think that at that point, someone could then pull the plug and say, this project isn't worth doing, you know? They'd, they'd be concerned. But I'm just, I'm concerned, I guess, again, with the things you bring up of basically giving a developer essentially, you know, an open checkbook to, to figure out whether or not it's a viable project. And I don't know, I guess I'd want some, that's the beauty of, I guess, a reimbursement situation. The project's already, already completed, we've got it, and I don't know how much upfront money the pre-development costs actually are. If they're not particularly significant, I mean, I don't really see why it shouldn't be a reimbursement, but.
We can always tie it to more specific tasks.
Why don't you tie it to the issuance of the permit?
That, I was going to suggest that, is we can tie it to the specifics.
You tie, because it's pre-development, yeah, they may have to take, you know, and write a check or whatever. Once they get issued the permit, then most projects have, to a certain size, end up having to have a bond, right?
Yeah, we can tie it to SDCs and permits, if that's more comfortable.
Then, then you're not looking at somebody's hand sketch on a napkin, you're actually looking at somebody going through the pre-development process through the city. Um, I got Indra and then Kathleen?
Yes, so you talked about the parking, which is a real concern of mine. Anytime you're increasing housing and the number of people in an area. But also, I would bring up transportation. Like downtown, we have one, basically through downtown, one bridge over, that's super congested. And so, I don't know, I just worry about all this extra housing, all these people. We have one, we're kind of not like other cities where they have a down, you know, lots of areas that are building or, or whatever, but we have our one downtown area that runs through our commercial district. I'm not against some of the dilapidated buildings, doing a one-for-one, you know, exchange, someone build a new place there. But when you're, and I'm not against multi-unit housing at all. I just don't know why it has to be all near downtown and not out. We have lots of areas in the city where it would be perfect to put that kind of housing, where transportation and congestion isn't such an issue. And then on that, that one side with the beautiful homes and the biking lane and the parking, I mean, that's not doable in our city where we're looking at unless you go down to, to one lane of traffic. So I see a lot of issues with this. I am all for incentivizing builders to build, build multi-unit. I just worry about, the congestion is so bad downtown already, and how will this impact that? Not to mention the parking, which it would.
Sure, so part of the reason we picked the downtown area was to get the housing units closer to a lot of the jobs in Grants Pass, so the downtown area, we're on this side of the river already to get to kind of the Walmart Staples area. So that was one piece. The other piece is that that section of town is one of our oldest sections of town. So we have a lot of lots and units that are getting ready for redevelopment. And because it's in the core of downtown, the thought process really went into that it alleviates a bit more of the need for the public transportation because they tend to already be close enough to those jobs and those things that they need that they could feasibly walk or bike, or maybe just have a shorter drive to get there. They're not needing to cross the bridge. A lot of our morning traffic is coming from the south end of town over the bridge. Not as much going the other way, and then at the end of the day, we know we have that kind of redwood pileup going south. So that area, in my opinion, was more of a concern of adding traffic there as opposed to our side of town here.
All right, got further questions? I got Victoria and then Kathleen? Okay, Kathleen, then Victoria? Kathleen, please?
Yeah, so what I'm reflecting on is, okay, what am I reflecting on? Is the grant money or the excise tax program specifically for downtown areas?
So the construction excise tax is for anywhere in town?
Anywhere.
Yeah.
And if, okay, so it, I see that it's more consistent and extended. Is the, the money for the, the first grant, the housing system development charge, does that have more freedom in who builds and in how they build and?
So the current program is specific to affordable rental at 80 percent or below.
Oh, both of them are?
This, well, the construction excise tax does have the ability for affordable homeownership as well. So we did fund an affordable homeownership project as well. The beauty of this fund, the LB fund, is that this is a city fund that was not built under any state or federal program. So we can do and build this program however we want, which is why we did not include an affordability cap or anything like that. We're trying to meet the market rate at the most needed area without requiring a program, which was also alienating or an added barrier to our local developers. Because that was my two personal main go, goals, was keep our local development community and building community building and developing. And make sure that the housing units we're creating are ones that our workforce can utilize.
Okay, thank you.
All right, further questions? I have Victoria?
So could you go to slide eight again? So I love the idea, when I was looking through this earlier, of seeing this developed, and I was thinking about what that would mean to the city in, you know, income coming into the city, raising the tax base. But I hear from several people the concern about the parking. And so if we were to develop this a little bit further, could it be more weight to a place that, that has parking? Or, I mean, because many of these places do have the parking, I'm assuming already. But, so that would be something that I would like to see written into it, is that we're not going to create something that builders can't sell because it doesn't have parking, and that we're not going to create more congestion on the streets because people living there are going to be parking there. So that's something that I would like to see. But I, I love the idea, I just, I'm, I'm pretty, I can visualize things and just looking at these purple dots with new tax base coming into the city and a renewed buildings. I thought that sounded pretty wonderful, so I'm very much in favor of this. But I would love to see more weight going to projects that had parking.
Sure, yeah, it's a bit of a facelift for downtown, for sure, which would, was another added benefit to keying it into this area. Yeah, we can absolutely add stipulations requiring a certain amount of parking. I'd like to lean on maybe UAPC and the planners to give advice for that. I've seen in the past that previous parking regulations were maybe too much, giving like that Black Friday parking that isn't completely necessary. So a nice median would be very friendly, because we also don't want to take up most of the lot on a parking lot if we don't actually need that much parking. So would that be amenable?
Oh, absolutely, yep. And we, of course, do have code that the city used for many, many years to, that regulates off-street parking. So, you know, we can, we have resources we can look to, to refer back to and include that. If I had heard you saying, as, as in the scoring, that that would basically give a bonus to somebody if they ensured that there is off-street parking.
Yes, I think that sounds really good.
So I had a quick question, that's going to be for you and Brad. From your guys' experience in dealing with this topic for so long, if you see, if, what would you envision the, the quickest uptake in development if this program is implemented? ADUs and/or cottage-style duplexes? I mean, what do you think, because I, from the outside, I look at this like, ADUs are going to start popping up, that just throws my mind. I mean, do, are you getting that same kind of feeling or a different feeling from the industry as well as your experience in this?
So just judging on what's currently being built, we are seeing a good amount of ADUs. We're seeing a good amount of flexes, up to, more so the duplexes, but we are seeing up to three and four occasionally. I would think ADUs would be the easiest to add in, especially if we're looking at properties that already have an existing unit. They can add an ADU instead of having to tear something down. Or converting to a duplex from a single-family, that's another one that could go pretty quickly. Or if they're looking at a vacant lot, which we're hoping for, right?
Yeah.
Again, with half an acre being the limit and tying us to this area, which is already very parcelized, there's not a lot that's even that big in this area. I would imagine we're looking at primarily ADUs, duplexes, maybe a triplex.
Okay. Thanks, I just wanted to get your guys' opinion on, I appreciate that. Further questions, Indra?
Yes, I have two. So are there requirements for builders as far as street improvements or sidewalks? Do they have to do, make a bike lane or more parking? What, what's the deal with that?
Absolutely, there's requirements. I will defer to Brad for most of this, but I do believe that at a certain percentage of redevelopment, so even if we're taking an existing home, there is still going to be an ask of curb-gutter sidewalks. I've seen someone adding a vacation rental that was asked to do curb-gutter sidewalks. So I do believe that is going to be a requirement on some of them if the existing is not sufficient. And then I will defer to Brad to fill in.
Yeah, yeah, no, the code's pretty explicit on, at what point do you need to, you know, provide the curb-gutter sidewalk if it's not there? It's 25 percent. If you add more than that in terms of expanding what's there. So if you come in with one of these lots and it's got, you know, an existing older house on it, you're just gonna, if you're adding more than 25 percent of the square footage that's already there, and there isn't a curb-gutter sidewalk, you would be required to put that in. You know, it's, if you've seen the map all over town, it's pretty Swiss cheesy, shall we say, in terms of where curb, where curb-gutter sidewalk is and where it isn't. So it's really going to depend a lot, you know, on that. But some, the, the engineers do look at, for the most part, they require that to be installed if there's not one. Every once in a while, we'll do what's called a fee-in-loo, where they actually just pay the money for it rather than putting it in, just because it can be a little strange to, to build a little island of sidewalk where there's not a connection to it. But, but yeah, it is required.
Thank you. And another concern of mine is, I think our down, I, I, our whole downtown area, living for residential, I think is really nice. Do we have statistics, like as we get more density housing or ADUs, do we have statistics on how many homeowner that live in their home move out? Because a lot of people, especially downtown, nice lots, a nice place to live, you're close to everything, but as it gets more congested and more housing and more parking, people choose, like in any city, to leave and go live on the outskirts of town or, so do we have, I, I would worry about that. And, and then suddenly, we have all rentals, you know, in our whole downtown area and no, very little homeownership. Do we look at, do you all look at that and how it affects homeownership versus rental?
So I do know that just over, I believe it's 43 percent of the households in Grants Pass are rentals, or renters. And anecdotally, I do live downtown, kind of in the south part by Burgess, and I would say the majority of my neighborhood is renters. These older homes tend to, from my, again, this is anecdotally, I don't have data on it. But when searching for ownership in that area, it was more affordable because they were 100-year-old homes. By and large, they were being rented out at the time I was looking. So again, anecdotally, in that, at least that lower area where I'm circling here, my experience is there's a lot of rentals already. I know on my street, at least half of the homes on the street have already put in an ADU. The guy across the street from me is putting one in now. These are already being built. And I don't know how it would affect.
Have we ever done like a long-term outlook on how rentership affects downtown in the long run? Because like if you look at Medford, their, their downtown area, and there are probably many reasons, but now no one wants to go there, and now it's all rentals. Well, we don't have a big area geographical like Medford, so do we have anything that looks out and takes that into consideration, long-term strategy or goal?
I do know that we've done some downtown studies that found that adding more people living within a quarter-mile of the downtown would increase the vibrancy and actually lower the amount of people who are houseless who are walking around downtown. So the more that there are people that live and feel ownership of that area, the less, for lack of a better term, comfortable people are in doing things like crime or sleeping on the street or whatnot. So it was found that adding people living there, whether they're renting or owning, you know, encourages businesses to be open later, because people come home and they're right there, they want to get dinner, those sorts of things. And the more that people are out and about and taking ownership of their neighborhood, the less people that shouldn't be there come out and take ownership of that space.
Yeah, we can check, it's, it's a good point. I, I think that would be very difficult to, you know, to, to nail down sort of the in-migration, out-migration, and attaching homeownership versus rentership to sort of that vibrancy. We can certainly do some research and look, but I think it would be, it would be a challenging metric to try to find. Moving companies, I know, we don't, we don't purchase that data, a lot of private developers do, from moving companies to say, okay, well, where are you actually relocating to? Because you, you may only be relocating within Grants Pass. So the data shows that you're moving, but you're still within Grants Pass. So you really need to know where are you, where are you moving to? You know, to understand, I think, what I heard the first part of your question getting to.
I know ownership programs like MLS or Zillow do track for purchasing, but only for purchasing. It doesn't show rental, so they, you can see, you know, this amount of people through Zillow moved from Grants Pass to X place, or moved from X place to Grants Pass. But again, it's only purchasing, and it's only the ones that were used through that company.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would just like to see some thought go into that, because I, and maybe it's just me, but I think a nice mix of homeownership and rental is good. maybe it's just me, but I think a nice mix of homeownership and rental is good. I think we've seen in certain areas of town, D Street, you know, over, when you get a lot of rentals, the neighborhood starts looking worse. I'm not judging, but you can see that. And so I would like more thought, you know, to go into that. I know it's difficult and how, how do you track it? But I would like to make sure that we keep homeownership near downtown. I think it's important.
Absolutely. And I, I don't have the data in front of me, but I did recently read a report that the younger generations, like younger millennials and Gen Z, by and large right now are, when they seek homeownership, they're looking for duplexes and homes with ADUs to help cover their ownership costs, which has been a big change from the previous generations. So I do know that that's one piece to the puzzle. And I can get those hard data numbers for you, but again, those would be nationwide numbers. They wouldn't be specific to Grants Pass.
Right. And I love the, you know, condos where they can own them or apartments, triplexes, where they're not just rented, but they can own them, I think would be ideal personally.
Yep. And those are included in this program.
Do they score more points in the RFP for that? Maybe that's a potential?
That could be a consideration, or we can even split out specific monies and say this pot is only for ownership. We do that with the CET. Further questions? I got Rob and then Eric. Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, this really doesn't apply to moving forward, but I do have a question on slide three. I know that the Housing Advisory Committee initiated discussions on this subject probably a couple, probably two years ago. And then this says that July of last year, they recommended this program to be presented to UAPC for feedback. And I'm just wondering, why did it take a year?
That's a good question.
To get the UAPC to approve something that was essentially a kind of a, almost a done deal a year prior?
Yeah. So we had quite a few projects come through the Community Development Department. So we've had some things be put on hold for bandwidth issues, both for us and for council and for UAPC getting on the schedule. I will say this probably could have come a little bit sooner. But a little bit of bandwidth, a little bit of, it just didn't get prioritized at the time.
And the UAPC is a, is a governing board as well. And I, I actually served on that committee numerous years. And if you talk to people in the UAPC, they basically tell you they're not beholden to the, to the HAC. So they actually scrutinize everything that comes across them in a judicial manner. Further questions? I got Eric.
Thank you for the presentation. I had a question and maybe, I don't know if, if you can answer this or not, but for developers, isn't there something out there that if it's going to devalue the surrounding home values, they're, they're, it has to at least equal to or be better than the surrounding value, the surrounding homes? Do you, do you see what I'm saying? Do you understand what I'm asking here?
Um, Brad, do you?
Maybe it's a developer question. I don't know. Is there, I guess I'm asking, is there a requirement out there like that? To my understanding, I believe there is. My concern is with a lot of the homes, if they get built, what happens to the value of the property to, to the surrounding areas? You know, should, should there be a requirement? Isn't there a requirement? I think there is. So how would that apply here?
I'm not sure about the requirement, but in my experience, especially in older neighborhoods, any new development tends to at least slightly increase the value of the property adjacent because it shows the bank's comps for what can be put there or what potential income could be from rental or homeownership. So typically, it does at least increase value at least a little bit, if not a lot. So that's why the concern was put in there about displacement because typically the concern is more about displacement and people being pushed out because their home values went too high as opposed to home values going down. Brad, do you want to add to?
Yeah, Council, I'm not aware of that requirement that you mentioned.
So basically, I mean, just like she said, you know, when you're talking about real estate, they utilize comps in any type of development specifically that takes it either vacant property or a distressed property or a unutilized property into development. That also increases the property value. But if you kind of go back in history a little bit on how Oregon as a whole, and actually as a nation as a whole, where there's been the sentiment of pushing or acknowledging an affordable housing crisis, quote-quote, it has been historically pushed, specifically in Oregon, towards more affordable housing, which basically does default down to duplex, triplexes, rentals and so forth. So I don't think that's always been a forefront on the topic. It's always been, and this is just my kind of experience from how kind of Oregon has evolved and actually the country kind of has too, is, is it really hasn't been precedent of, hey, if we drop a bunch of rental properties in your single-family resident neighborhood, how are we going to affect your bottom line? That actually hasn't been a question that I've seen in the historical kind of path that Oregon has taken to accommodate or tackle this affordable housing project or crisis. You know, it, it goes back to whether you want, whether you want a single-family residence with property or a large lot versus density. It's, it's that, it's that age-old question. And from my interpretation of how Oregon has evolved, and specifically kind of the whole West Coast has evolved in this tackling affordable housing or a lower-income housing, it has been, that hasn't been the topic. It's, it's more of, we want to get more bodies and houses. And, and you know, it's always been a density first, pro, you know, you know, push. But that's just my personal and my professional opinion as, as, it is my profession.
Thanks.
Further questions? I have Rob.
To just partially answer Eric's question on one small area. So in the, the Washington Longridge Residential Historic District, there actually is protections in place. If somebody adds an ADU, it needs to visually comply, not comply, but it needs to be consistent, visually consistent with the, the main house and the neighborhood. I think there's five different possible styles. So in other words, they can't just put up a cinder block, you know, a cinder block ADU next to a beautiful historic home in a historic neighborhood. So there is, in that neighborhood, there are restrictions to try to keep things from lowering property values. But that's just, you know, that's one neighborhood. And that was actually a pretty, a pretty good vision for the, the person that made that suggestion originally.
And that, didn't that come from the, the housing or the historical sites?
Historic buildings and sites. That was, as a matter of fact, as soon as state law changed, it might have been in, I can't remember what year. Was it 17 or 18?
Yeah, when they started, they loosened up the ADU restrictions.
When they loosened up everything, with regards to parking, everything else. Within a day, Ward Warren actually, the light bulb went off and he says, what can we do to protect the beautiful homes in that neighborhood? And he basically made that suggestion. And it, it seems to be nothing but a really positive.
Yeah, no, I think it has been an asset for that community. I agree with you, Rob. Any further questions? Indra?
So that's where I was going. I, I can't re, what's the boundary there on the Sixth Street side? I can't see it. Sorry.
Is that all the way up to Hillcrest?
It looks like Second.
On the west, yeah, to the west. What's the Boundary Road to the west?
It looks like Second Street.
Oh, Second. So that was my question too. How does that affect the historical district?
So they'd still have to follow any rules that follow under, you know, if there's a historic overlay or the Washington Street. Those, all those, all of those have to apply.
So basically to clarify, it doesn't circumvent the already?
No, not at all.
The regulation's already in place. Any further questions? All right. Seeing done. Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and/or action. Indra?
I, I had a question. I'm sorry, Eric.
Okay.
Do we see the RFP before it goes out? Do we approve that?
We certainly can.
Would council like to approve, see that before it goes?
Yeah, I believe it, just, I guess for clarification for everybody here, this is to, this is a request to implement the program? And so it can be further tailored from this point on? Is that correct? Okay. So this is a starting point.
All right. Because I think we had some concerns that we wanted to put in the RFP that I for one would like to see. So I, I would be in favor of moving forward with it, with the, with the knowledge that we're going to be able to look at it and approve it.
Yeah. So the two most important things essentially I'm asking for today is that council says, build me the RFP as opposed to, don't waste your time. And pause the Affordable Housing SDC waiver charge so that we can reserve that funding for this program.
So I would advise council to maybe make sure that your motion to carry forward is very explicit. Further discussion? I got Victoria.
Well, I would like to make the motion to move forward with all of, and I might not get them all here, so someone can help me if I don't, with the clawback clause, extra weight for parking. It would be necessary to have issuance to permit for the reimbursement, if I understood that one. I, I might not be quite on with that one. And extra weight for homeownership. So those were four that I wrote down, but there may be more. So those are the four that I have to add, but I would be open for an amendment to add others if I've missed them.
So maybe a simpler way to do it would be to motion this action forward with staff to proceed with an RFP and then bring it back to council for input as well as, does that make sense?
Yeah, sure. But I, yeah, I wanted to make sure to have those four things and there may be more in there. So it's already in there when it comes back to us.
Perfect. So there is a motion on the table to proceed forward with some predetermined clauses already in the RFP directing staff to, to develop the RFP and then bring it back to council for approval. It looks like I got a second from Rick. Any further discussion? Kathleen?
I just wanted to make a comment that this is such a beautiful area to live, and I think people do like coming here and buying. But it seems to me that 43% rentals is really high, and it seems like they're just coming to buy here because it's cheaper. It'd be nice, you know, if people thought, oh, it's a good place to live and I want to stay here. So that kind of confuses me, you know, the dynamics of it's a beautiful place to live, but yet they're turning their purchases into rentals.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, you have a motion on the table to proceed forward with stipulations and have staff develop an RFP and bring it back to council for further approval. With a second, I'll go into a roll call vote. Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And Victoria?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. Is Joel still on? And Joel, you are?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Joel. And I apologize. Joel, did you have any further comments?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Motion passes. And staff, you have full clar, you have clarity to go forward?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Osland Drive Property Sale, and I will hand it over to the microphone to Erin.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. I have a brief presentation with regards to a proposal to see if you're interested in selling a piece of property. This specific piece of property is off of Osland Drive. As you can see here, I sort of gave a, a larger city view, merge eye view. This is, of course, north of town. This is I-5. So this is in the far northeast section of the city marked by this big X. It's outside of the city limits and the urban Gulf boundary, but it is a piece of property there where there's usually larger lots and a few homes on, on hillsides. So this property was acquired for a future water reservoir. And here's the piece here. There are some residential homes around there. And this road right here is the Osland Drive Road. It is zoned woodlot resource, and it has currently a real market value of $131,240. As mentioned, we bought this as a potential site for a future water reservoir. It is no longer needed. And so I'm coming to you, to council, to see if you'd like to sell. We do know that there is interest from some surrounding property owners that may be interested in purchasing this property. So the way we would work this out is I would get direction from you as council that yes, we concur that we can release this property into public hands. We would sell the property. Proceeds from the property would go back into the water fund, which is the, the fund that purchased the property. We would start by getting a market analysis through a listing on MLS, and we would move forward with marketing that property. So with that, I'll stop for any questions.
Council, have any questions? Kathleen and then Rick. Kathleen?
So Erin, when you say that it would be credited back to the water fund, does that mean for the water treatment plant?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And is it, is it correct that a neighbor wants to buy that property?
We have, we have been contacted by a neighbor that is interested in the piece and not necessarily the water treatment plant, but it would go back to the water fund to be utilized for the water department itself. It could be utilized for the plant, but that in general would go back to the water fund.
So if we needed that money to take up the slack for some of the funding that we've lost, that would maybe reduce fees for the citizens?
Yes, in the water fund itself, yes. Yep. It would be a, it'd be an additional one-time revenue for the water fund.
But to clarify, he said, he said not specifically allocated for that. I guess, Jason's in the audience. Would you like to step up and, and maybe give a small description on what the water fund has the ability to fund? Or does that make sense? I guess because the question is, is, does it go back to the general fund for the water department? Or does it, or is it allocate, or blah, 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 blah? You kind of get where the question's going.
That's a policy decision for you. It can, it's generally just, it goes back into the water fund and shows as a one-time revenue and then gets allocated out with all of the other capital funding.
Okay.
So nothing specific. And then this property is just not needed anymore. We would be very hard pressed to build a reservoir now that the house has been constructed directly above it. And it's more suitable to put this reservoir in a different location off of Vertical Drive.
Thank you, Jason. Further questions? I had Rick and then Eric.
Thank you, Erin. So do you know if anybody's been on site to see if that's a view site? Because a lot of those properties out there are, and that could increase the value.
It likely has views. The property itself is pretty much deemed a buildable site. There's a piece of property here that's in equal acreage, and I think its real market value is only $50,000 to $70,000 because it may not be as buildable of a site. This is a site that is, we believe, we could, you could build on it if you so desired. So it has a real market value of that. This neighboring property here has a real market value that's very similar to this piece also.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? I got Eric.
Not sure if this is an appropriate question, but I'm gonna, I'm asking. You can stop if, if it, if it is. But is, did the city, are they, they're not losing any money by, by selling this property with this price tag right now?
No.
Breaking even or, I'll just leave it there.
Yeah. And again, like I said, we'll try, we'll do a market analysis with the real, and ultimately a chosen realtor when it's put on MLS. I'm just, we know right now that the real market value according to the county is 131,000.
Any further questions? I got Rick.
So Erin, I just noticed the property is zoned woodlot resource, so would have to put a home site on there. We'd have to go through a special process in the county, which could enhance, an approval could really enhance the value of, of the property. Would we, the city, ever consider that? Or we would just sell it as is?
I don't believe we should be in the developer market. And it should be just whoever the prop, old future property owner is, would go through that process. They may have different uses for the property.
Any further questions? Indra?
I just have a general question on property sales. So is it often that a property owner comes to the city to ask to buy property and we automatically bring it up for sale? Or you say no and don't bring it up? Who? automatically bring it up for sale or you say no and don't bring it up? Who decides that?
Well, it's a combination of all the above. This was a piece of property that Jason and I talked about even before this property came forward, this property, and joining property owner came forward is, well, we're looking at, you know, we really potentially don't need this and there was some general discussion there. And then the timing was also that this individual came up and had that conversation. There's times that, say for instance, abandoned alleyways or something along those lines or other small pieces of right-of-way that we have that are brought up to ask to see if we want to sell or if we'd be interested in buying. And there's times when council and our staff purposely go through and look at city property, what's available, what's potentially marketable. We did that, oh, just a couple of years ago and tried to market any, any available pieces of property that we did not see was of need for future city use. So it's a combination of all the above.
And the city feels that, you feel that if we want to sell, I mean, we could always put it up for sale for anybody, but that working with this property owner is the best use of, use of resources and we would save money by doing that as opposed to just putting it up for sale?
Oh, no, no, I'm not, no, no. This is a publicly owned piece of property. We need to go through a process. This needs to be open to the public to purchase. That's why we're going to put it on, on MLS. It's, anyone could, can offer up to purchase that property. This is going to be open for the public to purchase.
Any further questions? All right, seeing none, thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and/or action. Victoria?
I move to sell the property.
We have a motion to proceed with the sale of the property with a second from Kathleen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll bring it to a vote. Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right, the motion passes to proceed with the sale. Do you have full direction?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Can you, one more time, reiterate the process from here forward? Just a quick synopsis again so we all fully understand because there was questions up here on how it actually proceeds.
Yeah, we require the services to get this piece of property marketed on MLS. It will then be advertised as a piece of property that anyone can purchase as it will be on the public market.
And that'll be facilitated through?
Through a licensed realtor.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Rob?
So further clarification, so we would be deciding the asking price in executive session, is that correct?
Well, we were going to do, the way the mark, the way it is right now, it was, we were going to do a market analysis.
Right.
And then what I would do is I would provide you, if it was much, anything different than the 131, you would be able to know if there was, if it came back that it was worth $50,000 as a market analysis. I think we would need to have further discussion if it came in and around the real market value of 131. I believe we could go ahead and move forward with this, but before it was marketed, I'd provide you with the market analysis and see if there's any objections to selling it at that price. If you'd like to have a, another workshop on this once we have the market analysis, I could definitely do that.
Well, I mean, sometimes, sometimes real market value is quite a bit different than actually what, what the property can actually garner. There's no doubt about it, right?
Yeah.
We know that. So, so the bottom line is we have to decide a price at some point.
Yeah, and, and when it comes to selling city, when it comes to purchasing property for the city, that's a real key piece where you need to make sure you're, you're sitting in executive session, having a discussion on what you might want to purchase the property for, what the property price might go for. Normally on the sale of, of property, you go for the, what is the market analysis or, or what an appraisal is, and we've talked about that also. If council wants to meet and have that discussion, we definitely can. I need to refer to our city attorney to determine if it would be executive session discussion to bring forward what the market analysis is or if that's just more of a public record discussion.
Every property that we sold, since I've been on the council, council decided the selling price and gave you parameters to negotiate in executive session. Not, not sometimes, but pretty much every time. And so, you know, I, you know, we've typically given you parameters, you know, and it's typically been in executive session. That's just what past practice has been.
I believe that can be done in executive session and if we can't, then we'll, we won't bring it back that way.
So with that, does council have a desire to, council's already voted and asked that staff proceed with offering up this land for sale in the regards of actually soliciting a realtor and getting a market analysis. Would council have the desire to review that market analysis before it is, was actually listed on the MLS? Rob?
Yeah, so I mean, our call to actions today, one of them actually was, the one we should have taken was, market analysis, right? I mean, I mean typically an appraised price could be way different than the real market value. That's my point. So we could be cutting ourselves short here by tens of thousands of dollars by just selling it for the 131. That's real market value. That would be stupid. So I can't see making that decision today before we have had an appraisal done. So to move forward and say sell it at 131 is just not in the taxpayer's best interest.
I agree with that statement. That's why we either need to do a market analysis or an appraisal. I can tell you an appraisal will run you anywhere between $1,000 to $4,000 and it may take 60, 90-plus days based on the appraisals that we've been trying to receive. So if you'd like to get an appraisal on the property, we could do that. We have in the past also listed properties based on a market analysis from a licensed realtor.
Yeah, to me, a market analysis sounds sufficient for something that's relatively low, low dollar figure, but again, we could be, again, cutting the, selling ourselves short by tens of thousands of dollars to say we're going to sell it today for 131 without a market analysis.
So what we'll do is we'll bring this back to you in either, in executive session, letting you know what the market analysis is, then you can determine that selling price.
Yeah, and the motion to clarify was not to sell this piece of property for real market value. It was actually to proceed forward and soliciting a realtor to get a.
Market analysis.
Yeah, and then, so basically you have direction, you bring the market analysis back to the council for discussion.
Correct.
All right, is that good with everybody? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, that kind of cuts down our agenda for today. Now we're at, I mean, for our workshop agenda, now we're at agenda review. Does any counselor have any questions, comments, or discussion in regards to our agenda? And I see Victoria, just because she was at the peripheral my, and then Kathleen. So Victoria?
I'd like to see A, under the consent agenda starred with just an overview of the safe routes. I kind of had some questions about safe routes and if this is just another phase of it, if there are many, many more. So I don't know if it just needs to come off the consent agenda or if it just needs to be starred with explanation.
We'd be more than happy to either answer any questions you may have in advance of the meeting or star it and provide a brief presentation for you, whichever you feel most comfortable or whichever council feels most comfortable.
Yeah, I, I would like a presentation. Start with a presentation.
Okay, so there's sentiment on the table to have the consent agenda, item A, starred for our next meeting on Wednesday with a brief presentation. Everybody good with that? Looks like we have consensus. Thank you. I got Kathleen and then Eric. Kathleen?
I wanted to ask that we review the resolution on national events. I feel like there's been two major national events that have come up since the summer that we, our hands were tied in allowing them in our city. The pro-life march was one of them and then this Charlie Kirk vigil, vigil. They were recognized by so many cities, so many national, had such a presence that I was, I guess it went back to a resolution that a former city council said that we were not going to recognize these things and I'd like to revisit that resolution, possibly change it.
Are you familiar with the resolution that we're discussing?
I'll have to research the, the resolution specifically, but I understand the spirit of what you're mentioning and we'd be more than willing to have a workshop discussion on, on that, on that topic if that's what council desires.
Thank you.
So, so we'll go ahead and put that on the back of.
Okay.
Our agenda.
Certainly.
I appreciate that.
How should we title that? Is it around national events? Is that the right way to say it or?
Well, if I find the resolution, I'll title it based off the resolution, but I understand what the spirit is and we'll have that marked on the placelot. I don't know what the specific words will be, but you'll see it on the back.
Rick, did you have something to add to that?
I believe the resolution before was the words were used, controversial subject.
Yeah, now it's coming to mind. I know exactly which one you're talking about, counselor. Thank you.
Okay, further, is it on the same topic, Victoria?
I think it might be on the same topic. So I think there may be two things here. Earlier we talked about the issuance of proclamations. Is that under the same or would that be different?
Yeah, it's, it's basically this similar thing, so it'd be proclamation type.
So that will be added as well?
Yeah, and I think the difference is, is that with the proclamation, it was not only the authority of the proclamation, but also the, the subject matter of the proclamation. With this topic, we're sort of addressing the subject matter of the proclamation and we could take that as a guiding document to have that discussion for this topic.
So it is both, really is though, yes?
Well, that's, we would utilize that proclamation document, I think, as some of our guidance on what we actually promote or not within the city as, as, as a guiding document to start the discussion. I don't know if council's wanting to discuss who gets to proclaim something or not because currently right now it's the mayor's authority to proclaim. I didn't think that was in question.
No, no.
Just the subject matters in question.
Subject matters.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion, I had Eric in regards to the agenda.
Yes, thank you. The SOP regarding legislative policy, have we decided yet exactly when that's going to happen or it shows right here, it was put on there for nine, eight, third one down.
On the back of the agenda.
On the back, yes, on the back.
I believe the nine, eight was when it was.
That's when it was put on there.
Right.
We're coordinating that discussion with also a legislative update and then future legislative campaigning with the, our legislative.
So it's still undecided?
We don't have a date yet for it.
Okay.
I'm hoping by the next agenda setting meeting, we'll be able to have some potential dates for the mayor and council president to consider.
Yeah, staff is currently doing their research.
Thank you.
Any further discussion in regards to agenda? Indra?
Yes, on the back of the agenda is the municipal court. I would like to see that scheduled on the agenda on one of the dates. To me, that's a major priority over a lot of the things that we've been discussing in workshops. So what's the holdup with moving that up, I guess?
Currently, that, that has been in the discussion of agenda setting for numerous times here. What we're getting from staff is they are still doing a lot of the research on that because it is an in-depth conversation and it has a lot to do with it. So basically, staff is not currently prepared, but they are doing their research to bring it forward. Yeah, sorry, Stephanie, go ahead.
I actually have been working on this, done the research through the statutes where we've kind of been hung up is nobody has created a municipal court in a long time. Everybody's as old and established. We're surveying, we're trying to get the information from how different entities are running. I was actually at a conference on Friday, there was a session on municipal court. I was able to pick the brains of a couple of judges afterward to get some guidance and they suggested that I reach out to a number of entities that are listed on the municipal court document. So that's my next step. As soon as we have all that information together and we know kind of how the different entities put theirs together, where their funding streams come from, what their rules and procedures look like, I'll be bringing back a package of information for you to decide what you would like me to pursue further.
Do you have an estimated timeline for that?
My goal is within the next couple of months. So before the end of the year, I should have something back before you, the survey. I'm anticipating I'll get the information back within a few weeks and then start pulling together what I need to do from there.
And Indra, I appreciate you keeping attention on this and I just really want to clarify, I am actually keeping a lot of attention on this too and, and staff has been embroiled with a few things as of late and their time has been stretched a little bit thin, but it is always a question that I'm asking. So we are, we are, we are desperately trying to get that to move forward and, and I appreciate you shining more light on it. Thank you. Rob?
So on the same subject, you know, I would hope that staff would also bring back an analysis of whether or not a municipal court is like us to practically help us in any way. Because my understanding is it's never seemed like we have a lack of laws on the books. It's never seemed like we had a lack of arrests. It's never seemed like we had a lack of arresting people a dozen times as they use the revolving door of our criminal justice system. So even if we had, since I don't think it's on the table for us to open our municipal jail back up, that's been closed for decades. It's still there, but since we're not going to do that, how would a municipal court even help us?
That is actually one of the questions that I have on the survey is what are you seeing? Are the benefits, are there things that you're seeing that don't work? Those kinds of things.
I'm not talking about the benefits for other cities, I'm talking about for our county with our sheriff and our jail. So things could work really well in Medford or Ashland. We have a different jail situation. So whether or not we even should, in my opinion, invest any discussion in this at all would be, would this even be likely to help us?
And that would be council's workshop discussion. Do we want to pursue anything along of this nature or not?
So I guess my point is, I'm pre, I'm giving you that question and Erin that question upfront so we don't go into our municipal jail discussion without also being able to have the discussion of whether or not this would even be, would help us in any way. So it's up to you guys to do the research and find out, answer some of those questions. How is our jail situation different than Jackson County Jail? Do their municipal courts work and would ours work the same way given our limitations on our jail? Because it could be a very short discussion of municipal court if the answer to those questions is no.
That is already information we were planning on gathering.
Thank you. Indra?
Along those same lines, if we do find that that is not going to help us, I mean, the other question I would have is how can we work with the county DA and jail to make it work for us? Because my understanding and a lot of people is that they're not, we're arresting, our police are doing their job, but they're not being held accountable by the DA and the jail. So I think part of that is if, if municipal court isn't going to help, or maybe it's a combination, how can we work with the DA and the sheriff to get more jail beds or more prosecutors that possibly the city just pays for to make, keep criminals accountable for their actions? So I think that would be part of that discussion as well.
Okay. I agree with you a little bit, but I kind of think that that would be the evolution of that discussion. I think at this point in time, council has expressed their desire to investigate how to actually put a municipal court together, which is basically kind of like the start, the building blocks of it, but that would be a continuing conversation with, you know, with, okay, hey, Stephanie comes to us and says X, Y, Z to do it. Council says, oh, great, we want to continue to do that, then, then it's going to be continued on. Even if you, council says, no, we don't want to continue it, you can still continue those conversations with getting more research from how the DA and the county jail systems work. I just don't know if it's lumping it together with that is, is a little bit too much.
We're going to bring back as comprehensive of information as we possibly can because we want you to make the most informed decision. I'm not, I don't think there's going to be a recommended path necessarily as far, much as a, here's what's working, here's what's not working, here's how we could do this, what do you want us to pursue and what do you want us to come back with in designing a program?
And you're talking about topics that can be linked, but also can be discussed separately.
Yeah.
It's, you're talking the criminal justice system, so these are all items that you can talk as a package. So these are all items that you can talk as a package or that you can highlight and focus on individually.
Go ahead, Indra.
Well, to that point, since municipal court is going to take a while to finish researching and going, maybe we should pursue what we can do now with the county in the meantime before we maybe do a municipal court. So maybe that's something, Aaron, I don't know, you know, city staff can start communicating to see if, if the city can work with the county in any way. I would be for that.
So maybe we could do a small reach out to county officials to see if, if we could maybe do, in a future workshop, have an educational discussion. Just kind of brainstorm at this point to see if we can accommodate all counselors.
I'm still thinking that based on what we're discussing, it might be best to have a comprehensive overview and that's sort of what the discussion of municipal court, adding what the council repel was talking about and other things to give you the most information and make an informed decision on these different pieces, cogs in the wheel. So I, I think it would be good if it came together as a package.
Go ahead, Indra.
I, I see what you're saying. I'm, my concern is about, you know, as we have closed the parks and people are out and about more and calling, I just think, is there something we can do in the meantime? It's going to take months and months for the municipal court and is there anything to do in the meantime? So I'm just thinking this might be a first step to do something. And have you ever reached out to them? We talked about that, I think. Have you ever reached out to the county to see how we can work with them in law enforcement?
We're always working with, in conjunction with the county, both the DA and the sheriff's office and, and whether the municipal court will help. I think that's a key piece and, you know, can we just go ahead and just buy additional jail beds and what would that do or does a municipal court need additional jail beds or do we even need additional jail beds in the municipal court? These are all items that are important, but they're so closely linked, I think, in, in order to get you what you're looking for. Just having a conversation, yeah, the DA, they have, they have their own challenges. The sheriff has their own challenges. So I, I think that we would need definitely more direction from council if you're wanting us to address certain aspects of the criminal justice system. I'd like to have further details on the criminal justice system at a council level on what your ultimate objection, objectives are in moving forward.
Specifically, I would like to know, and I don't know if other counselors agree, I would like to know, can we pay for an extra prosecutor just to prosecute those city crimes? And can we pay for more jail beds so we can hold more people accountable? That's specifically what I would like to know.
Yeah, we looked into that in the past and the answer is we could, we could fund, we can provide more money to the DA, but they, they specifically do just city projects. It's still a DA and they would need to, it's, we would be bolstering their system and helping the whole system. Can we buy additional jail beds? Sure, we can buy additional jail beds and have some additional jail beds for our capacity. We did that back in 2013 and, and I think we got 15 additional jail beds for about a million dollars a year or something along those lines, so.
Is that something we could have you pursue to look at?
Well, I think that we should have a workshop on what, if you're wanting additional jail beds, is that the answer and what are the additional jail beds trying to fix? What are you looking at wanting to, to fix? What's your outcome that you'd like to have with this? What are we trying to address? Because municipal court might be a thing, jail beds might be a thing, further enforcement might be a thing, different codes ordinances might be a thing. I need to have more, I need, I would like to have more direction on what, what is it you're trying, what issue are you trying to address and what tools do we have to potentially address those?
Okay, and, and I am specifically holding the catch and release and holding people accountable for their crimes. So not just, and the low level crimes, which are the quality of life crimes, which is what most people are, are upset about in our community, the, the walking. And I, I just had two yesterday, you know, they walk against the light right in front of your car, the defecating all over, the breaking of the windows. I mean, just the low level crimes where there's no accountability at all. That's what I'm interested in and, and I don't know the answer. That's why I would want you to talk with the DA and or sheriff to bring to us, is there anything? Maybe there is nothing, but is there anything we could do that would help that situation?
Recognizing that, that's why we're having this municipal court discussion and that's why we're bringing that forward is to start to address those issues as a tool for us. So I think that's directly in line with what we're already tasked to look into and provide a report to you on.
Okay, it just takes, this is my last comment, it just takes so long. I mean, we're, you know, we've been dealing with it a long time and we're now, everything takes so long. I'm just trying to get something started, that's all.
Thank you, Indra. I appreciate your comments. Further discussion, I got Victoria and then Eric. Victoria?
So just from listening to all that, I think I, Stephanie said it's, it's maybe in two weeks that we'll have something that, to come forward in two weeks, just some, not, not the whole thing, I understand.
I will be lucky if I have answers to my surveys in a few weeks. I won't have anything to come back to you probably for at least a month and a half, if not more.
Oh, I, that's completely understandable. So I was thinking in that presentation though, with things that were said here, can we add in that workshop that will come as a result of what you're doing now, a, because it will take a long time, we'll have some, this is what a municipal court would be and maybe it's going to involve a municipal jail and we recognize it's going to take a long time. So we're also going to add to that workshop, some things that can be done in the interim. That's the point I wanted to make.
We'll see if we can come up with some options like that. And I'm also, I was just discussing with Aaron that I'll make sure we have some data as well regarding what we're dealing with, what we would expect to see as far as violations, misdemeanors and transports to jail and releases.
That sounds really good.
Eric?
Just to kind of explain to the public that's listening, I know Indra brought up some good concerns regarding the revolving door. I'd like to focus on the fact that there is a Senate bill, Senate Bill 48, that's out there that is the matrix where the revolving door occurs, the proverbial revolving door. That's Senate Bill 48. So some, unfortunately, some of those things, we can't prevent on the county level or the city level. So that's where we're seeing a lot of this frustration with the municipal court, Senate Bill 48. So if, if we want to see something like that stop from happening, that needs to happen up in Salem.
Any further discussion in regards to upcoming events or the agenda? All right, seeing none. If you guys are already adjourned, I am because I do need to use the restroom, so we'll.
I motion we adjourn.
Thank you. We're out of here. Thank you.
Everyone but Clint adjourned.